All right, so welcome to the Select Board meeting. This is being recorded and today is the 6th of April and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance through the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Would someone, either of you like to read the governor's COVID remote participation piece?
All right, I have it up.
Okay.
Please, please note that due to the COVID-19 coronavirus outbreak and due to Governor Baker's order, the Town Hall is closed to the public in regards to public meetings of the Select Board unless otherwise postponed or canceled. Otherwise, they will livestream the Select Board meeting via Zoom on the Internet and via Public Access TV on Charter Spectrum Channel 191. In-person attendance and public comment at the Select Board meetings will be suspended until further notice. If you email a written public comment before the scheduled Select Board meeting, it will be read at that Select Board meeting. If you email a written public comment after viewing something at the livestreamed Select Board meeting, it will be read at the next Select Board meeting. Please send your public comments via email to selectman@townofsouthampton.org. Please note that all public comments must be within the requirements of the policy on public comments listed in the open time for the public below. All right, so then to watch on computer, tablet, or by phone, go to zoom.us/join. Hit "Join a Meeting" in the top right of the screen. Type in "meeting ID 88531752108", password 222253. Hit "Join" and be sure to mute your device when you're joining in.
Great, thank you very much. Any announcements or any words of wisdom? Words of gratitude beforehand? I'll say thank you to Francine. You've been very busy Francine with, between Finance and PQB. Thank you for leading the Select Board meeting last, two weeks ago while I was away. I appreciate that, so just want to pass along my thanks to you.
You're welcome. It was fun. I enjoyed doing it, except not the call for a vote to adjourn.
Oh, okay, well.
I was so excited that we were done before three hours, if I can.
Yeah, that's good going. Okay, so we don't have any public hearings and there are no appointments and resignations. We can start with Select Board reports. Whoever would like to begin?
I'll start if you want. It's up to you. I have a few. Let's see. Okay, start with some of the simple ones first here. Board of Assessors just met, in fact, they may have just finished. I had to leave the meeting early, but they were basically discussing routine business around abatements. So kind of getting involved in their routine activities as usual. The Master Plan Committee, we have finally received our final version of the report from Piney Valley Planning Commission. So this is kind of the wrap-up of the community survey and the sort of the next steps of what, what ended up being some of the priority actions from the community survey. And so the report now outlines that a little bit better in terms of the short-term goals that we should be focusing on as part of our action plan. And then there is a separate appendix that has the longer-term goals separated out. So Master Plan is going to be meeting probably on the 13th of April to discuss that. And once we've gone through it and feel that we're pretty good with it, we'll bring it back to Select Board and present that. Concom met last night. Basically opened the bids. The forester was there to open the bids for the forestry cutting plan on Alice Brown. And the award was given to the highest bidder from West Hampton. The work is probably not going to start until much later in the year because he's already got a busy schedule. But more toward fall/wintertime is not a bad time to do the cutting anyway. So that's probably an okay time. There's not any real rush on getting that done, but it's been completed. Today was supposed to be a day where any bidders for the Man-Hand Meadows Sanctuary would get together and walk through the property so they could have a firsthand look on it. I'm not sure if anybody showed up or not, but the bids are due, I believe, on April 12th. And those will be opened in a special Concom meeting next week. So once those bids are opened and awarded, then the work on the Man-Hand Meadows restoration, renovation, rehabilitation, whatever project can begin. And then probably lastly, we had talked about the mayors, or I'm going to call it the Select Board Monarch Pledge from last time. And Concom did do a final, did do a vote because they were meeting. So they did do their vote and approved joining in on that. And basically working on the whole issue of invasives to keep knocking those down at various conservation properties and keep on creating better habitat for pollinators. And Rini, I can get to you and Ed probably later in the week. My, my understanding is to submit that, we've got to go on to the National Wildlife Foundation website. What we had was just a sample pledge. And so it's actually on that website that we would have to submit it. So I'll take a closer look at that and get back to you.
Okay, yeah, thank you. It looks like it made a point of saying that when you sit down to do it, you have to do it in one sitting. You can't save it.
Yeah, I think that's probably true. So that, the, let's see. The tech committee, subcommittees are meeting this week. And the main tech committee meeting, ad hoc tech committee meeting will be next week. There was, and from my knowledge, I haven't got a confirmation on that, but sometime between now and the end of next week, the first rollout of the first, I believe, I think it was eight laptops should happen. And so we'll keep on top of that. But that was the, the schedule that they were working with for the laptops for the department heads at Town Hall. The old Town Hall Working Group has met twice. That consists of myself, Christina Madsen, Doric Dodds, and Chief Illingsworth. And we've read over the report again that was presented by the, by Jamie Hill had presented that report to us. And we've looked around the outside and talked about priorities for the exterior of the building. And basically all agree that the highest priority is to do something about the water damage and the drainage. Basically with that cement pad up front, the, the, sorry, the handicapped accessible ramp that is not of proper, proper incline, it's not to code. And then especially the strip of cement with tarmac put on side of the, the building alongside the parking lot area. That's where a lot of the splashback is happening and ruining a lot of the brickwork. So what we've talked about with Ed is to have, see whether the Hill folks would come back out and actually send an engineer out this time to do a little bit more in-depth looking at the drainage issue and help prepare some sort of a design for us that would have specs that would say, okay, you need this much piping, you need this many loads of gravel, et cetera. And essentially develop a scope of work in a way that could be sent out for bid to start that process. So that's, we're just making some headway there. And so I'll follow up on that. And then probably I've saved the best for, for last, as far as I'm concerned. The grant, the ad hoc grant committee. Two things, we've submitted another application this week on April 1st. We submitted the expressions of interest for the One Stop for Growth Grant Program, which is the new state program that I mentioned that consolidates about 10 different grant programs into one. And having met with folks from representing planning, housing, highway, police, and fire, we came up with three different ideas to at least throw out there with no commitment whatsoever. Just an idea of things that we would like to see somebody help us with. And they revolved around affordable housing, around the fire, sorry, around the public safety complex, and looking at possibly expanding our commercial tax base. Looking at the idea of mixed-use regulations, which would be a typical usage that would have residential on the top floor and business on the bottom floor. To see if there's any way in our currently zoned commercial areas, if there's a way to expand that anymore and do that. So we had three ideas that we've pitched to the state. These are just simply expressions of interest. They will get us feedback in the month, this month, and tell us whether there's anything they think is worth our time to apply for a full grant. And if so, we'll take it from there. So that's just really no commitment whatsoever. It's just, here's what we're thinking about and how can you help Southampton do something? But the biggest news, I think I had told you way back in December that we had applied for a grant from this program that's in connection, it's a state program in connection with Mass Works. And it had this terribly long name, which was very confusing, but it is the Housing Choice Small Town Capital Grant Program. And somewhere in the fine print, we read that there was a little bit in there for land acquisition. So this was our first grant application attempt of the ad hoc grant committee, whereby we put in an application to try to get some funds toward the purchase of the three-and-a-half-mile rail bed, the right-of-way basically to the railroad that runs through town, so that we can actually start doing some work on the bike path. You may or may not know that the, we don't actually own the, the land, and so we have to acquire this land. The price tag on it that was developed probably three years ago, four years ago now, is closer to $400,000. So this would just be a portion of that, and we've put in another grant as well. But just to say that we have been awarded $100,000.
That's awesome.
Toward this project. So I'm really excited and I really just want to thank both Ed and Diana Federman and Kate Swistecrooks, who's just been great as a working committee and working really hard to put our grant applications together. So first one is great. So hopefully that bodes well for a second round of something through the Mass Trails Grant, which is the other one we applied for, but we definitely won't know anything about that until July. But $100,000 is a pretty good, good start. So I'm hoping we can do that.
Fantastic start.
That will really maybe get this project off the ground finally. So that's it.
Good going, Chris. I'm telling you, between the, you know, DLTA grant for the HR Regional Services and this, and when Chief Workman joins us, I'll ask him to mention about the $12,000 grant that the Fire Department received and Trails Grant. It's fantastic. So thank you to the Grants Committee and everybody for the, that's a huge, huge thing to get that off the ground. That was number one on the Master Plan Committee for the town.
Right, yep.
Go on finding that land acquisition point, too.
Yep.
Great, great. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Wonderful. I do have one quick question. On the trees and the, you had the bid opening and you awarded it, you said to the highest bidder, is that?
Yes, because when, when the lumber is harvested, a portion of that, most, most all of it, a portion of it goes to the forester, but a large part of it comes back to the town now. We had passed that. So the town can, yeah, the town can use those funds for future trail maintenance, signage, et cetera. So the, I'll tell you, the, the winning bid, I believe, was $11,900.
Good. So the highest bidder means something to us. That's great.
Yes, it does, actually. We, yeah, there were the three bids and we picked the highest bidder, yes, or they picked the highest bidder, yes.
Okay. All right.
Francine, would you like to talk about your committees?
Sure, okay. The PQB met on April 1st. They approved the revised job description for the CLA Director. CLA Board members who were present recommended adjusting the salary based on that job description. And the PQB agreed and approved. We also rescored the Assistant to the Highway Superintendent position at a grade eight. And we're requesting that the Highway Superintendent submit a revised PRF that corresponds to the range, the wage range associated with that grade.
Can you just repeat again, the title of the position is Assistant?
Highway Superintendent.
Assistant to the Highway Superintendent, okay.
Okay. All right. Next, we approve the following resignations or separations from the Fire EMT, among the Fire and EMT personnel. They include Liz Lemelin, Richard Paul, and Raymond Rodriguez. We also approved and recommended for the Select Board's consideration increases up to the state minimum wage for the following Fire and EMT personnel. Tyler Alberti, Nathan Bodro, Alec Deltman, Eric Loyco, Anna Nadler, and Jeffrey Russell. The PQB continues to gather information before submitting the revised wage scales to the Finance Committee and the Select Board. It is expected that that process will be completed by the next Select Board meeting. And finally, the PQB recommended that Juneteenth be added to the town calendar as a paid holiday consistent with the Governor's Declaration of June 19th, also known as Freedom Day, Liberation Day, Emancipation Day for those enslaved in the United States. And that's the end of my report on, on PQB.
All right. I have a question before you move on to another committee. So Chief Workman's joining us because one of the agenda items focuses on the pay and the matrix. He just has a couple of meetings in the Fire Department, so he's going to text me when he's available to join and we'll speak about it then. So when I was getting, talking to Ed before this meeting, just to get up to speed on a few things, he said that the PRFs did not sort of make it to our packet. So are we able, I mean, we can't approve it without having the in-writing signatures by Finance and all that. So were you just mentioning that they approved it and then we'll, well, once we get the PRFs, we'll approve, we'll, we'll discuss them, right?
Right.
Okay, good.
I'm just reporting on what the, what the committee did at its meeting.
The committee did, okay, good. I just want to make sure that we didn't miss out on having something, okay.
I wasn't bringing anything forward.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. All right. And then since our last meeting, the Bylaws Committee met twice. At its March 24th meeting, the Bylaw Committee prioritized the following drafts for legal review and we submitted them to the town administrator based on the $600 limit of funds to do so. So the order priority is the Select Board, General Government, Community Preservation, Overnight Parking, and Restrictions on the Issuance of Licenses and Permits. I know we exceeded the number, we're just trying to see how much we can get for $600 and.
And actually, that's an agenda item tonight, too.
Yes. And then the second bylaw meeting was held on March 31st, where we finalized the draft soliciting bylaw with Chief Illingsworth and submitted the following for review by the Select Board. That was nuisance, building numbering, and soliciting. In each instance, the Bylaw Committee will post drafts of these bylaws for public comment and review on the town website. The Committee also plans to hold a Zoom public meeting for discussion among residents. Whether we do all three at one time or a couple at a time is still under discussion and additional information will be forthcoming, and we hope to be doing that in the very near future. And then finally, the Community Preservation Committee will meet tomorrow, April 7th at 5:30. And the Finance Committee will meet on Monday, April 12th, it's 12 at 6:00 PM to continue its work on fiscal year '22 budget.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Francine?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so I will bring up, just hang on one second. I'll bring up notes from my committees. So first of all, the Board of Health did not meet since the last Select Board meeting. And thank you Francine for reporting on their meeting that you attended in my absence. I did go to a meeting this morning with emergency personnel, our every-two-week call. So I'll update that under the COVID update agenda item. For the Council on Aging, the awning is up to extend for outdoor space, outdoor classes, which will restart in May. A big thank you to Kate Swistecrooks, who is actually helping a lot with getting people scheduled appointments for their vaccine. Many, she's helped with many, many appointments for seniors in town. They are planning for the staff returning to onsite work. And the partnership that they've had with Good eats to Go has been a huge success with getting meals out to seniors in town. There is a meeting of the Council on Aging tomorrow afternoon at 4 o'clock, and so please join. It's posted on the town website. And then the Neighborhood, the Open Space Review Committee. A lot of exciting things are happening there. I hope you all received a copy of a flyer in the mail. An absolutely beautiful flyer on the Neighborhood Outreach Programs. This was a grant that was funded, and it's to provide, the state grant, four events in town for residents. Advertised in a beautiful brochure that went out to every household over the weekend. So reservations for the events started coming in immediately. And you can email openspace@townofsouthampton.org to register, pre-registrations necessary so that we can know what numbers, especially to keep COVID safe. Couple of them are educational programs about conservation options, and then there's hike. But it's, please check out the flyer, it's absolutely beautiful. And it gives some information about the Friends of Open Space also, their organization. So they would, you know, if you were interested in supporting Open Space in Southampton, please consider a donation to the Friends of Open Space. The second part of the Neighborhood Outreach Program is focused on bringing people together who own large parcels of land, particularly around Palmer Mountain, Little Mountain, and Tai Comedy watershed areas to hear expert speakers on conservation restrictions, APRs, tax credit options, and land appraisal, and to connect neighbors and to dialogue on their questions and answers and plan for their property. This is directly related to the Open Space Charge, which is consistent also with the Master Plan, originally in 2013 and the updated one in 2020, where 69% of residents indicated support for preservation of Southampton's open space. And then lastly, the Open Space Committee has supported the creation of a map of the Barnes-Aquifer location out of town with best practices for its protection, supported by an LTA grant implemented by PVPC. Finalization, printing, and mailing of that piece is designed for saving and ongoing reference. It will happen over the next several weeks. Again, it's also a beautiful educational brochure that shows exactly where in town the Barnes-Aquifer and gives suggestions for keeping our incredibly excellent drinking water pure. So that's it for my committees. Any questions? Okay, so Ed gave me a couple of updates. Most of them are agenda items. So I think that what I'll do is I'll just, we'll just keep going with the agenda. And, but first and foremost, I wanted to just clarify a couple of dates. And because I wasn't at the last Select Board meeting, I just want to make sure that I'm clear about them as well. So June 12th is the date for the town meeting. And June 13th is a Sunday, is the rain date for the town meeting. The election, my understanding, is scheduled for June 22nd. Okay, is there, and there's no rain date, obviously, because it's going to be a lot of mail-in options as well as in-person options, right? Okay, but no early voting options in Town Hall. Ed did say that he verified with KP Law relative to the question that came up in the last meeting around ballot questions. So I believe Lucy had mentioned that ballot questions are due within 35 days of the original date for the election. And actually, what KP Law said, no, it's 35 days from the new date of the election. So that's what their interpretation of the legislation was. And that the warrant needs to be posted one week before the town meeting, correct? And I'll wait, I have a little bit more information about the whole Capitol, but I'll wait until Matt comes because he's our representative, he's on the Capitol Committee. Is there any other dates or deadlines or anything that you want to mention now? No, that covers the dates that were talked about?
Tammy has, I know, has something. I wouldn't steal her thunder.
Okay, Tammy, I know you, hang on. Tammy, can you, can you speak?
Yep.
Okay, hi, how are you?
Good. Tammy Willen is 298 College Highway. Another set of dates to keep in mind is August 13th and August 14th for the Let's Celebrate Southampton event.
That's wonderful.
So please mark that, those down. Friday night is a band, Saturday is, is the town picnic and an assortment of activities.
Okay, and is there a theme for this year, Tammy?
No, it's just celebrate. Let's celebrate Southampton.
And celebrate getting outdoors again, getting out again.
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you for letting us know about that.
Yep.
Okay, so moving on to the agenda, we have no quarterly reports. And starting with old business, Assistant Accountant position. So Ed is posting that up on Indeed. I think he was just waiting to secure where he wanted to find or allocate the funding from. In the meantime, we did get an applicant, was passed along to us, a resume. And he was wondering if anybody in the Select Board would be interested in working with him on interviewing. So, or either of you able to do that, or if not, I will try to do that. It's just harder during the day if that's what the intention is, for me, anyway. You will, Francine? Okay, that'd be helpful, especially with your finance background. So this applicant that was passed along seems very, I think I, I don't know if I, you have had a copy of that, but if you could just, okay, I will send that to you because it was sent to me originally. And I will send that to you tonight.
Oh, Rini, could, could I ask, is there any? I know the process for, you know, selecting people and so forth, but having someone perhaps from Finance also join in the interview process?
I think that would be totally fine if people feel like they're available to do that.
Okay.
I don't know, Ken, if you wanted to ask the committee if there's anybody who would like to participate in any, they're going to be Zoom interviews anyway.
Sure. Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, that'd be great. And I'll send both of you then a copy of the resume that was forwarded to us. It seems like it's somebody that meets the qualifications of the position. But then Ed is also putting it up on Indeed.
I'm, I'm sorry, Ed's not going to be at the meeting tonight and I missed the.
Yes, actually, he's not feeling well, so he is not able to come tonight.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so next is the E Street Bridge update. So let me just find my notes about that. Okay, so we did receive the Waterways License. VHB also received an okay review from MassDOT. They are working on, so they're, they are about to put out bids. The bids have to be posted for four weeks. It's a big project, a lot of subcontractors. And so because of that, they are working together with VHB to request an extension on the Mass Works Grant. As you know, this was a grant that we got for, I think, a million dollars. The town shipped in the additional 2.5, if I'm not mistaken. And, excuse me, I'm just letting Matt in. Hi there, Matt. So Matt, at this point.
Sorry, I'm late.
Yeah, I had mentioned that you were going to be coming a little bit late, so I'm glad you're here. We're up to the agenda item where it talks about the E Street Bridge. So the update that I gave is that we did get the Waterways License. VHB did get the okay from the MassDOT review. And the bids are going to be going out. The bids will have to be out there for a period of four weeks. Because it's a big project, there are a lot of subcontracting that's involved. So VHB and Ed are working on requesting an extension from the Mass Works Grant. So that, any questions on that?
Nope. I'm just glad it's moving.
Yep. Okay. And while we're at it, I'll mention, I don't necessarily see it on here, but I just wanted to mention that on the Route 10 Bridge, it's supposed to start either next week or the following week. It will be planned for either 90 calendar days or 50 workdays. And that'll involve removing the water pipe from the actual river up into the sleeve underneath the bridge on Route 10 near Lyman Sheep Metal. But the water pipes also extend up towards Brickyard and also up to Fulmer. So it'll involve a one-way road for, like I said, 90 calendar days.
Okay.
All right. And then the next thing on the agenda is the Bylaws Amendment Review, KP Law Update. So what I was told, that the $600 that have been allocated to do the bylaws review will cover, I believe, three bylaws. I think the bylaws committee put in order of priority. And the question is, do we, are we interested in increasing the funding for that? Ed felt confident that we had money in the legal fund. He just wants to make sure that there's money for KP Law to review the MS4 wastewater bylaw that Randall will absolutely need to have in order to be compliant. And that's something that will need to be on the warrant for the town meeting. Does anybody have a proposal or a suggestion as far as the bylaws review process?
Well, we were told that the $600 would cover three. We gave you five or six. That's doing more. And we have, you know, three more in the pipeline that I think we should, we should get into that priority list. So let me, let me just get that back to Ed and you. I'll talk with the committee and we'll get the next one lined up. But I have a feeling I know which one it will be. But again, we want to be able to, to have some public comment on, on, on the soliciting, on the nuisance, and on the building numbering.
Yeah, but I think that, didn't you have a lot more bylaws that focused on government that haven't been reviewed that KP already has?
I, I went through that list. There, there might be one or two more because I, I think we had a list of seven and I gave you, when I look at my list, I think I gave you five or six of them.
One of those is just a correction too, that one of them was a correction.
And you had a couple of deletions, if I'm not mistaken.
I don't think we were even counting those. We were trying to get the ones that really had, you know, things that people needed to buy in them first. So there were four at least. So if we can, you know, get a couple more on there, that would be great. I would be in favor. I think I've seen the, you know, the signing off on the vendor warrant. I've seen the amounts for KP Law and it looks like we've got a balance there and from tonight's expense report as well. So I think we can afford a little bit more to get these moving. Otherwise, they're going to be so, you know, so passe by the time we get around to actually approving them.
Didn't you have, yeah, don't, don't you already have? The list that I saw, I thought you already had some that were sitting, waiting for them to approve.
We do.
So I wasn't, I wasn't thinking about the numbering or the solicitor or the nuisance bylaw. I was thinking more about moving along some of the ones that you already have in front of them.
Right.
I gave, I gave six.
Okay.
And I'll add, I'll add, I think we still have two remaining that we did not make that list. I'll get those last two and then we'll have eight. And let's see where they go. That would be great.
So you're not looking, you're not looking for us to make a motion tonight to increase any funding towards the legal fund? Or are you just going to wait and kind of talk to him first and then bring it up at another time?
Well, I mean, since we have to have this ready, I'll get, I'll get the other two to him by tomorrow.
Okay.
And if they can do all eight, that will be fine. If we can get an estimate, if he thinks that they, we have sufficient money, we'll go for all eight.
I mean, yeah, why don't we, why don't we vote on something? Just, I mean, I don't know if you still want to put a cap on something. I mean, I was just totally guessing when I threw out that $600 figure before. So obviously, it didn't get us very far. But if we wanted to put a cap on it of, I don't know, $1,500 or something and do whatever you can do for 1,500 to get them on the warrant? Because I think that's the challenge if we want to get any of these that have been sitting around on this town warrant. We've got to get them done before the end of, well, before the middle of May at the very latest, right?
Right. Okay.
I'd support moving along these bylaws if they weren't controversial since we're still in COVID times. And also, as many as possible that, you know, you've already voted on as a committee. I think the three, the three that might raise questions, I would rather there's more time for public to comment on. But if it's just the ones that are general government and things like that, then he, he said that, you know, if you wanted to vote, you know, another $600 or something, that he felt confident there'd be money in that line. Even with the wastewater bylaw. So if you want to just get a list and then come back next time and just say, okay, this is what we're told. We can get these six or eight done for this amount of money. Do we want to spend that money? I think that'd be fine.
I, I have the list already. I already sent it.
Okay.
And I reported on it tonight. Select Board, General Government, Community Preservation, Overnight Parking, and Restrictions on Issuances of Licenses and Permits.
Okay, that's, well, how many is that? Four?
No, four. One, two, three, the Select Board. One, two, three, four. That's, it's five, four. Sorry. I forget you two more.
The, the restriction on the licenses is just the correction one. So there's only four to review. There are a couple of more that they have. Council on Aging, they have fire lanes, and maybe something else. So I'm thinking there's another two or three.
Yeah, okay.
That they already had as well. So.
Right.
And we already voted in favor of them, right?
I'm sorry.
The Select Board already voted in favor of the new language, right?
Yes, these have been there for a year now. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And then there's a couple that you deleted.
Right. Yes. And all they would have to do was be in agreement with those deletions. There were three. I'll put those on the list too.
Yeah.
So as much as we can get, if we can get $1,500, then we can much, as many of those as we can get done, we'll do it.
Okay. So I mean, if they're able to do all of those for, you know, around that amount, then do you want to just check and just get some sort of estimate and come back? Or do you want to, what do you want to do? Anything?
I think we should just go for it. If we vote on it tonight with a, with, you know, a ceiling, a dollar amount, and go.
Yeah, it gives them a head start. I think if we delay, then we're just going to, we'll not get many of these ready for the, for the town meeting. So I'd, I'd put forth a motion to have KP Law proceed with essentially the group of general bylaws that had been submitted to them basically over a year ago, or about a year ago now, that had already passed through the committee as well as Select Board and try to do as many as they possibly can. So there's about six or seven that were revisions and then a couple of others that needed, we were recommending deletion and one that needed a correction. So two or three of those should not take up a lot of amount of time. So I just moved that we, we vote on, I don't know, I guess, letting them go ahead with those, that list. And maybe if you wanted to put a ceiling on it, I'm going to suggest $1,500.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
[inaudible]
Falls I.
Rowden I.
Rowden I. Okay. That'll help move some of those along that have been waiting. And thanks for your help on all that.
That's a nice, that's a nice surprise. Thank you.
Yeah. No, if you want to just make a note, that was Chris's motion and your second, just so we can pass it along to them.
I got it. Thank you.
Hey, all right. So what about the Amendment to the Wetlands Protection Bylaw update? Yeah, go ahead.
No, I had asked Ed about that a couple of days ago and I, we, he had not heard anything. He was going to double check on it. So I, I don't have any update. But that should be something simple and I'm expecting that to be one of the articles on the town warrant.
Yeah, I think what he told me about that was, there's a little back and forth in terms of the difference in either opinion or suggestion between the Concom and KP relative to whether or not any bylaws, remember the whole discussion about, is it a fine? Or is it, you know?
Yeah, that's, that's taken care of, I think, Rini. We, we were in agreement to put in the $300 in the actual language of the bylaw. What was wrong, wrong at the time was what KP had given us as a draft, just said $300 per offense. And it was supposed to be $300 per day per offense.
Okay.
That was the correction. We asked Ed to just double check with them. And then we had asked them to take a look at just one particular sort of recouping of funds for the town related to filing of an enforcement order at the Registry of Deeds.
Right, right.
But that's the one that we aren't in agreement with yet. But if, if there's something that, you know, they need to clarify for us, they, they weren't sure that there was enforcement done by the Registry of Deeds. But for the Wetlands Protection Act, I think that's where we've certainly been filing things. So this would allow anybody who does get an enforcement order, the Concom doesn't believe that they should have to pay for it. It should be, you know, recouped from the landowner. So that's all they were trying to do is that one specific.
Right.
Fee, which would be there. So those are the only two things that they have to just, just re-clarify their position on. And then it should be ready to go. And it's just going to be the amendment to Section 12 of that bylaw, not the entire bylaw again on the warrant, but just Section 12 amendment. Okay?
Yep. And I think that's what he said, that I think KP raised the question about, it wasn't her understanding that a lot of other towns had an enforcement order and submitted things to the Registry of Deeds.
Yep.
So I think that's, what's that?
I believe they do, from what we know. Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's why I think what he said they were checking, KP was checking to see about other towns and they thought that was just unusual. Okay, so I think we'll just pick that up next time. I think we just need more information about that. So the next is the short-term, long-term disability. And we had a presentation on the long-term, short-term disability. We had figures of what we have been spending relative to employees being out and how it negatively impacts individual departments. So we had two different requests for proposals. And what we were told last time is that the existing proposal is good until April 18th. So when I asked Ed, so are we sort of up against the wall in terms of making a decision about this? He said there would be no, I think he talked to the person from, I'm just drawing a blank. I have it on my desktop, the whole proposal. But he's, I talked to the person that had done the proposal and he said, yes, well, the existing proposal would just have to be amended. It'd have to be a reissue. So we could, as a committee, vote or express an interest in pursuing this for the beginning of the fiscal year, pending approval by the contracts, you know, with police and other highway and such. One way or another, would have to really, we wouldn't be able to jump right on board anyway because we'd have to involve different levels of employees. So I, I think the discussion is, are you or are you not in favor of, concept-wise, if, if not specifics, of having a disability policy, short and or long-term disability policy that's based on an insurance policy versus self-funded?
Well, from the numbers that Ed provided, I think it was before the meeting, well, a meeting or two ago, we were averaging probably about $14,000 or $15,000 a year in, in, you know, reimbursing people 75% of their salary when they're out. Well, I believe the premium is somewhere in the $13,000, $14,000 range. It's whether or not we annualize it because it fluctuated, went from as low as $2,000 to as much as $20,000 in a year from the schedule that we saw. So I'm, I'm certainly in favor of, of of knowing what our exposure is and doing it. I had mentioned this before, whether it's that we set aside a reserve fund and that we use so that departments aren't hit with these additional expenses during the course of the year and use that as a substitute, like in-house premium, so to speak. Or we go with, you know, a commercial that would, you know, manage the cases as well. But I think, I think we need to do some, one or the other.
Anybody else have a, just thing you'd like to discuss relative to support or not of having a short-term disability plan?
Yeah, I think conceptually, I'd like to still continue the discussion and, and renew the, the possibility of, of looking at this. Because I think there's, there's a lot to be said aside from the, the surety of the sort of an annual amount. I mean, from a budgeting point of view, it just seems to make a whole lot more sense. And, and again, not have it necessarily be detrimental to one department or another, but something that is provided by the town. And I think if we did our own fund, then that gets into a whole other management issue, which, you know, if we had an HR department, that's one thing. But I think at our level, it would be better if we would do something like this to go with the insurance company and let them manage the entire ball of wax. So I'd be in favor of continuing the discussion on that and renewing whatever estimate or whatever they have to give us.
Anything else you want to add, Matt?
I feel the same way. Continuing the discussion, I don't have a decision on it now. But I like, I like the levelness and the ability to budget on this from an insurance company perspective. I wouldn't, you know, we've been fine self-funding this. I mean, knock on wood. So I, I don't see the harm in continuing the discussion and getting more details and not rushing to this.
Yep. Okay, so I feel the same way. I think having a budget that can be, you can count on, you can know what it involves. There's always a little wild card. It's always a little bit of, who knows what's going to happen? So I support that. I agree in the absence of having a strong HR department. And what Ed said is, you know, buying any sort of major shift in the employee mix, that he didn't see any reason why it wouldn't be like a reissue. It's just that it was written up to be a proposal that, you know, is, as written, would be up until the 18th. So I also agree. I think it would be worth continuing to support this. We could talk about the contracts for union employees and we can also look at funding of this. So I would be in support of this also. So I don't believe we have a vote that we need to take on this. But I will pass along our interest in including this, if not for the beginning of the fiscal year. We'll get a little bit more information between now and then, but I'm in support of it. Any other comments about that?
Yep.
Okay, I guess we can go on to new business. The Fire Department, I don't believe he has, Chief Workman's going to join us for that discussion. The short story is that the minimum wage went up in Massachusetts to $13.50 an hour beginning January 1, 2021. So this discussion will focus on bringing people up either Fire Department, other people below minimum wage and that sort of thing. That's what that discussion will be about when he joins us. And there's a document that we got in our packet about that.
Rini, just a question, and I guess I'm just not familiar with it. Did the new law apply to private sector and public sector? I wasn't aware of that.
It does not apply to municipal employees. So it's not something that we're mandated to do. It's something that we have an option to do. And we don't, we could do it to some, not all. I mean, we're going to have a discussion about where we stand on that. Because it's going to start with John proposing. He has some PCFs that he has, that we're going to see next time. I think he, it's already been approved, like Francine said, by the PQB. We just don't have them in our packet. So it'd be a discussion in preparation for approving or not approving the PCFs on the Fire Department, okay?
But part of that discussion would be that we would extend it to other employees who fall into that same category. Is that correct?
Yeah, if we, if we want to do that, how do we want to handle this across the board, kind of a thing?
And with, and with that, I'd really like to see the numbers, the impact of this.
Yeah.
Okay, so that we know what we're, what we're talking about. It needs to be quantified.
I believe what I've heard was that if everyone who is below minimum wage, and that is primarily the Fire Department employees, the volunteer coordinator on the senior center, the substitutes to the library, and the election workers, that if the decision was made to bring them up above $13.50, it would figure between $1,500 and $2,000. And that would be retroactive from January 1. I don't have that in writing or I can't confirm that exactly, but that's what I was told.
Okay.
So we'll go back to that when John texts me and says that he's available and he can explain a little bit more about it, okay? The next item is election workers. So it's the charge of the Select Board to, the Select Board is required to notify the chairpeople of the town party committees by April 15th that they may submit a list of party name members by June 1st for appointment. for appointment as election officers. No later than June thirtieth, the registrars must submit to the select board the names of the persons on the list provided by a party who appear to be qualified to act as election officers. And then it goes on with various timetables. So right now, we just have to vote um to ask Ed to notify the party chairs, so the chair of the Republican Committee and Democratic Committee, let them know that they may submit a list of party members by June one for appointment as election officers. Would somebody be interested in making that motion?
Go move.
Second.
Any further discussion? I will just tell you that it goes on about the different things, if no later by July fifteenth. Do you want me to read that?
That's what's in our packet, right?
Uh, yes, yes. Okay, it goes on about, you know, and if the, if we don't select anybody by such and such a date, then uh then appointments can be made by the registrars and so forth. So anyway, the first thing is we just notify the party chairs that by June one, they can put forth names for election officers. So all in favor?
Fishman eye.
Bowls eye.
Rowan eye.
And Groden eye.
Just a, a quick question. Was there a number of election workers that we need to identify?
Not on this uh um Mass General Law thing here.
Okay. Yeah.
Since I'm the scorekeeper here, who seconded that?
Matt.
Yeah, thank you.
It doesn't say. It just says election offices using the list provided by the registrars. Okay. Okay, so we'll just take one step at a time on that one.
Hmm.
The next is um COVID update. So we had a meeting this morning. Um, Chief Illingsworth wasn't able to attend, but uh EMD, Don Snyder, uh, chief workman, buyer and Jerry Swanson, health director were present with myself. Ed was not able to join um unfortunately. So, you know, the good news is that all the staff are okay and there's um plenty of PPE um for the departments. Unfortunately, we went from green to yellow in terms of cases in town with twenty three documented cases. The feeling is that it involves a lot of kids, sports and passing on that way. Um, Amherst has extended the homebound uh COVID immunizations to Southampton seniors. Um, and again, Kate's been very helpful with that. Uh, they are using Johnson and Johnson, so it's a one-time vaccine. The schools are opening full time um on the twenty sixth of April. Um, just in advisory, to please stay the course, I have to tell you that at work we're in a third surge, I'm really sorry to say. Uh, the census is up, the staffing's down. It's not a good situation. So please, everybody, uh, we're not out of the woods yet. Please continue. Get a vaccine. I think by the tw- um, there's a date for when it's open to everybody over the age of um.
Sixteen.
Yeah, the nineteenth. Uh, anybody over the age of sixteen is eligible to get a vaccine. Um, right now, there's no planned open town hall. I know some of the local communities have done that. Um, Hadley's doing it, so does a hybrid model. Like Tuesday, Thursday, right now, there isn't a plan. There are some people who had been working remotely that are returning, like I said, on the senior center. But um otherwise, uh, right now, I think the plan is to get past the April vacation of the kids and see where we stand around the beginning of May. Um, what else? You know, it came up uh at the meeting this morning that um, you know, West Hampton just approved their public safety complex and Williamsburg just approved it also, that we really need to put this back on the, you know, radar. I know you mentioned it today, that that was one of the places that you were looking for that sort of combined grant opportunity. But the recommendation was made this morning that we resurrect the public safety committee. John Martin was our represent, representative to it. I know, I think Francine at one point had expressed an interest in being involved with it. I'd certainly be willing to um be involved and contact the, the members of the committee and schedule a meeting, but I really do think that we need to continue to keep that on the front burner and look for ways of um.
Yeah.
I mean, they're not in safe buildings. We found that out from the um envelope study.
Right. No, absolutely. And, and just to say that, you know, we knew that the committee had kind of gone into hibernation, shall we say, uh, that I wasn't even sure who was still on the committee. So we did um in our meetings with the grant committee, we did invite Ian and John to join us and they, they did for a couple of sessions and gave us their input. And Ian had actually found the, I'm not sure it's really the report, but it's the presentation that was done, I believe, at the town meeting back about five, six years ago.
Yeah.
From the design folks. So we had that to work from. But I'm thinking there are other reports that we don't have our hands on. So that would be one thing I would like to know is um, you know, are there other documents that we should have to be able to review and try to have as background information for grant opportunities? But we'll see, we'll see how the state reacts to the first idea. Um, and part of what we were doing was to say, look, let's, this still remains one of the best options in terms of location is where the fire station currently is. We know the whole issue of the ledge and the wetlands, but nonetheless, we did purchase that land. And one of the portion, one of the categories, rather, of the grant is underutilized town owned properties. So it kind of fits in that regard. So we were wondering about sort of reimagining that site. Um, taking a look at the, the costing, for example, for West Hampton and Williamsburg. Now granted, they may not be quite as big as what we were imagining, but nonetheless, those price tags I've seen are around five million dollars compared to the eleven million dollars we were quoted five or six years ago. So I think there's some negotiating room here somewhere to relook at even what we did before without redoing the whole study again. But just taking another look and being sure whether, you know, that's not somehow still viable in a different direction. That's all. So.
Jamie, hang on one second. I just want to mention that for those that don't know. I mean, I've been on the select board for um four years now and uh there's been a lot of pendulum swinging back and forth from, you know, we should renovate the existing buildings, use the existing site, and then it swings in favor of, you know, purchasing a land for public safety complex. And so when the pendulum was swung in favor of renovating or doing something with the existing police, I mean, the fire station, um, you're right, uh, it was a million dollar price tag to excavate all the ledge behind the building. And then we end up purchasing land behind that. And then when we were thinking about doing something more with the existing town hall, the old town hall, um, we wrote, we wrote to a number of landowners for properties that we thought would be a good fit or possibility. You can't go too far out, otherwise people's insurance, you know, they end up having, it's not the same as it being more, in a more central location. We also can't have fire trucks going uphill when they leave a fire station. So anyway, um, we ended up purchasing some land uh next to the old town hall, um, which is where the old Grange was. So we take steps in certain directions and then hit a wall or, you know, controversy frankly um comes up. And then we end up having a moratorium for a period of time on the public safety complex. So we need to go back to the table, I guess, is the short story. And I think everybody kind of in agreement with that.
Yep.
Yep, go ahead, Tammy.
Tammy, Lunas two nine eight, College Highway. Um, it's interesting that you brought up West Hampton and Williamsburg because both of them are, you know, uh, West Hampton's tearing down their existing building to do it. Williamsburg is tearing down an existing school, even though they're older buildings. They've realized they can't fix them to make them fine. They're taking them down. And it, you know, we've, we've recognized we can't fix the fire department the way it is.
Right. And I, and I think as we were talking about it with our, our grant committee, just briefly, you know, I think we've got to respect some level of, of um, of history in town. Uh, and I'm sure, you know, we would need further discussions with the historical commission, but I, I'm, my thinking is that there would be a way to preserve some portion of the facade or something of the old fire station. But trying to renovate that would be not cost effective whatsoever. But if there are a way to somehow save a portion of it for history and build around it, that might be kind of nice, but who knows? Somebody needs to be able to tell us some of those kinds of options. But um we have to take the history into consideration in this particular case because it goes back, way back to like nineteen oh four, I believe.
Eighteen fifty.
Oh, is it that? Oh, wow. Okay. More than I thought. Okay.
Yeah. And so the historical commission would have, you know, a pretty, you know, definite opinion about this.
Right.
And so that's why the compromise of trying to like preserve a facade or preserve it in some way. But, you know, it was a schoolhouse initially, initially, and then it became a fire station. So I think we just need to go back to the table and uh consider the options and continue to move forward. Now we have the grant committee that we're keeping an eye out for things. I think we just, you know, I don't want to presume that because it fell down the list a little bit on the master plan survey thing, that it shouldn't be right up there. Because we do need to have a, a safe place for the police and fire to work.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Yep. No, I don't think there's any disagreement there. Yep.
Yeah. Okay. Um, okay, so that was kind of it on the COVID update. We're still meeting every couple of weeks just to kind of update. I wanted to make one other point. Uh, Don Snyder had mentioned this when we were talking about the new public safety committee. You know, he was a firefighter and started working in the department in the eighties. And, you know, he said it was, you know, it was not a good building even back then, so it's certainly not now. But he thought it would be good, what, in the process of doing um uh that, considering uh renovating the building or whatever, that there'll be a public education campaign that, you know, it was very eye opening to me to see the envelope study and to see the vents, the exhaust vents that were cylindrical going into a square, you know, um, entry into the building. So, you know, the exhaust is like not really completely contained. So anyway, just to put on the radar that we should make sure that we do a public education campaign uh regarding the condition of these buildings. Um, so let's just remember that too.
Hmm.
Okay, COVID uh CARES Act update. I know, Chris, you mentioned that you two are going to get together with Ed. What we need to find out is what has been expended by department and therefore what is left that can be spent and or reallocated.
Right. Yeah, I've got, I've got a partial report. I, I got a report from Regina um last week that really lists out everything by warrant that was spent on, on the COVID uh funds. But that's the way it's categorized in our town books and how it gets reported back to the government. Um, what I've got to do is take that and pull it apart a little bit for the actual vendors and then just reallocate them on the set of spreadsheets I have um per department. So I'm going to try and, sorry, I'm going to try and um have an, have an intruder here. Um, I'm going to try and um catch up with, with Regina and Ed maybe Thursday and try and do something to do that because it's really important. I think we've got about um something like three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, I believe we've actually expensed. So that's good. Uh, but there definitely is some money that can be reprogrammed and we need to know that, especially before we get, you know, something new with the next rescue plan coming in too. So I want to be sure we have a better handle on uh what might be able to be shifted around or reprogrammed at the department level. So I'm going to work on that this week later on. Yep.
Yep. And right now, the expenditures, you know, can be up until the end of uh the calendar year.
Correct. Yeah.
I mean, there's not like, you know, immediate urgency. But I think that we don't want to put money on the table and we want to know what departments have gotten what and what, what's available to re, reprogrammed or whatever.
Right, exactly. Yep.
Okay, so you'll, uh, we'll ask that that be back on the agenda so we can have that information. There might be some departments that are hoping, especially if we're going to get close to opening the town hall, there might be things that we would need to have.
Yeah, possibly.
Okay, American Rescue Act. Now, I've been hearing that uh we're getting, you know, Southampton's getting one point eight million and, but we don't know what it can be used for and when we're getting it and all that. I don't have an update or anything from Ed on that. Does anybody?
No, haven't heard a thing.
Okay. All right. So uh we'll just uh make sure that that's in the agenda for next time and maybe there'll be more information. Open space and recreation plan update. I do have an update on that. That is moving along and almost done. I mean, obviously, we all wished it was done last year. But um Ken, Ken from Pine Valley Planning Commission uh did send Ed a re-edit uh of the plan. Uh, as you know, it was posted. There were adjustments that were made. And uh there is one additional um edit that has to happen, which is table five, which is conservation lands. And um so his plan is to reach out to Conservation Commission and a few other people to uh finish up that last piece, which is table five of the open space plan. I did not have a chance to go back into the draft um to really understand exactly what is being asked, but that's what I was told. So it's slow going, but getting there.
Okay.
Hazard mitigation plan. There was a doodle poll that went out and it was sent out to all the stakeholders. There are four dates uh on the calendar for um participation in a um workshop done by Fasson O'Neill um to help the town of Southampton identify a project that would be worth submitting for the municipal vulnerability preparedness program. And that is, you know, climate resilience is a big piece of that. So everyone's encouraged to um watch a quick video presentation before, the link to that is on the invite. And if people were, didn't receive an invite and who might be listening or watching and want to be part of this um project, uh, all you have to do is reach out to Ed. But there were dates that were sent out um and people are supposed to choose one out of four of them. Does anybody have the dates handy?
Yeah, I do. Um, April thirteenth and April fifteenth. It's a Tuesday and a Thursday. And apparently there's four sort of small group workshops, if I'm understanding correctly. Uh, one at three o'clock and one at six o'clock each day.
Yep.
So April thirteenth and April fifteenth, three o'clock or six o'clock. I believe you choose one of the four, if I'm correct.
Yep.
And that, that's it. And this, this is actually, it's late, but I, in some ways, maybe it'll be good timing because I believe I saw something about the, the MVP grant program uh opening up very shortly as well. So this is, you know, this might lead right into a grant proposal.
Yeah. And I was very impressed by the initial um program that Fasson O'Neill did just to kind of uh create the sort of scope and overview and possibilities. I think they did a very good job, so I'm looking forward to it. And Ed did say, he just sent that out and um I think at least ten people have already responded um choosing one of the workshops. So that'd be good to keep that moving.
Hmm.
Any questions or comments about that?
Yep. Just, just a comment. If, if people are interested, but they happen to have a Hotmail account, our townofsouthampton.org email does not like Hotmail. I don't know why. We're still trying to figure that out. So if you have a Hotmail account and you'd like to be involved and haven't heard about this, pick up the phone and call Ed so that you might get, uh, get the information. Um, if you were part of the original committee of stakeholders and you haven't heard about it yet.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know that. Um, so the next is internet service. So it's kind of interesting. I mean, we seem to be talking about all the items that rang true on the master plan. You know, the open space, the bike trail or the greenway, uh, the internet communication system, uh, public safety complex. I mean, these are all the things that we, you know, want to continue to keep on our radar and move forward. Um, I received a letter from, and as did the select board, from a resident in town and a physician. And I'm happy to read it under correspondence. I don't have it up at the moment. But um I just wanted to add this as an agenda item because, you know, we had a presentation about what it would involve to us to become a um municipal light district. Uh, a lot of people complain about our current internet service provider. So I just wanted to see if the select board wanted to recommend either that um Ed reach out to Charter Spectrum and find out a little bit more about why it, you know, to give us a report as to what the problem is. I just know that there are a lot of people that are very unhappy. What do you think?
So I, I think we need to hold Charter Spectrum more accountable for one thing. But at the same time, I do think we should be investigating alternates. And, you know, I'm interested in what the American Rescue Act, it's about infrastructure, whether or not some of those funds might be used for that. But we know that the price tag that they gave us for the municipal light district was like four million dollars. But one point eight, not that it would all go to that, but it could contribute to, uh, you know, to getting us started if, if in fact it was able to be used for that purpose.
Yeah. No, I definitely think we need to. That came up as the number two priority on the um, on the community survey and actually in the final report that Ken has put together for us to review. I've asked him to say, okay, well, so what does it mean to be in, in a municipal light district? He said, well, first you have to have a municipal light board. And I said, well, I'm pretty sure of all the. board. And I said, well, I'm pretty sure of all the, all the boards and committees in town, we do not have that one yet. So, you know, trying to help us understand what we need to do to get organized to do that. But then there may be, you know, I know we had the presentation from Westfield, Whip City, was that the, what the, Westfield something or the fiber?
Yes.
But there may be others as well. They may not be the only one in town or around. I know they've been doing a lot of work in the hill towns, but there may be others. So I definitely think it's a priority that we need to keep pushing on. And the timing, again, we just might be at the right place at the right time if some of this money from the rescue plan can go toward infrastructure. I don't think all of our 1.8 million Francine could go to that, but
Oh, I know.
But it could get us a start, you know, maybe out of that, there could be a portion of that that's dedicated toward improving, you know, vital infrastructure. And I, you know, we just might, might be able to tap into that. So whatever the next steps would be, I guess it wouldn't hurt to have a, a session with Charter and, and, you know, make, make frustrations known or ask them. I mean, I think it varies from what section of town you're in, right? So some sections have, you know, terrible access and whatever they think their, their speed is, is way off from what they are paying for. So, you know, I don't, I don't know what we would get from Charter to talk to them, but I suppose it wouldn't hurt. I don't know.
Yeah. I will, I will follow up then and ask Ed to reach out, or I will, to just let them know that there's a lot of dissatisfaction in the quality of the service and see if they can explain to us what might be able to happen to improve that.
Right.
I, you know, I, I appreciate having, I see a lot of the communities switching to a municipal light district, but I still feel like, I don't know, I still feel like putting them on poles is just not the future to me. And that's what worries me. I mean, I just feel like it's a huge investment in an old technology or an old service delivery. You know, I just, there's a part of me that feels like there's got to be a better way.
Yeah. Well, and I think to the extent that we can, you know, maybe understand a little bit more, you know, if we were to get a committee of sorts together, again, I think at least a couple of people that are currently on our ad hoc tech committee, I believe would have the skills and would be priming people to, to try and get involved in that as well. And there's some interest. I know Art Lawrence has got a big interest in it, various others do as well. So I think there's ways to, to sort of revitalize that and get it, get it forward, whether we go with a light district or not. I mean, to try and figure out how to, how to do something kind of innovative for the town would be helpful.
Chris, can you check in with, when you have a next meeting of the tech committee and just kind of pass along this discussion and, you know, that, you know, the, the presentation by Whip City Fiber is on our website. I mean, anybody who hasn't seen it can certainly see it. And just, you know, I'll contact Charter or Ed will. And if you can contact the tech committee and what are our options? Are those the only two? You know what I mean?
Yep. Yep, I will. I have referred the study to them. So I know that they are aware that it exists. So I'm sure of that.
It would be great if we could kind of jump over this step and get to the next generation.
Yeah, I know. Yeah. It's kind of like leaving your landline for the cell phones, you know? And it's like.
You know, about that American Rescue Plan or American Rescue Act, you know, I hate the fact that we're going to have to wait till 2025 to fix East Street. You know, the bridge is going to get fixed later on this year or, you know, hopefully by summer they'll start on that. My hope, because of where I live, is that Route 10 Bridge gets done before the other one gets blocked. But, you know, Route, East Street's a mess.
Yeah.
And, you know, if any infrastructure funds are available, it'd be great to either do Part Two, which would be the bridge to Route 10, or Part Three, which would be the bridge to County Roads.
Yeah. And what I don't know is, you know, you know, we get on their, the list of DOT, you know, like the Bike Path, for example, is on the list for, I don't know, FY24 or something there too. But, you know, I'm wondering if there's not a way to get us, you know, a little, a little advanced, you know, year wise on the, on the tip list at DOT. And I have no idea how that happens. But if, if that would be something that John Vellis or somebody could help us find out.
Well, if you remember correctly, John was sort of voted in as an alternate. There's a group that meets and discusses these priorities and so forth. And so I, I got the impression that it's not something that you can just move up the list on. Most of these towns have been waiting for these for three to five years.
Yeah.
But I'm just hoping that there might be other funding. So for example, if we're able to move forward on doing Part Two, might be the bridge to, you know, Route 10, that when 2025, 2025 comes along, would be able to use it for Part Three. I don't know that all of it would be funded anyway. So anyway, again, it's just another thing I want to keep on the radar.
Right.
Okay, so the next is revenue and expenses. And we usually do this every other meeting, but Ed wanted people to know that the most recent revenue expenditure report does have an additional vendor warrant on it. So he wasn't sure if people wanted to take a look at it or if you wanted to have, have it or not. So he sent it out to everybody in the packet. Do you want to review it again? Or do you want to just do it next time when we are meeting with the entire finance committee to kind of go over FY22?
I'm going to wait.
Yeah, I asked a bunch of questions last meeting. I don't know that I've got many different questions. I mean, I think one, one of the challenges though is somehow reconciling the whole electric gas accounts.
Yeah.
You know, tied in with our Cow Power account credit program. Because, you know, those obviously show in the negative and it's got to be that we're, you know, we haven't yet applied the credits to them. So somehow that's got to be made a priority to figure out that reconciliation between the gas and electric for all the town buildings so that we know what we've really spent on those, I think.
Yeah.
But otherwise, they look too very similar to what we'd seen a couple of weeks ago. I didn't have any other questions per se, I think, myself.
I watched the last Select Board meeting and I, I had the same questions about the accounts. I mean, obviously, they're the ones that are overspent.
Yeah.
So I don't have any additional ones either.
Right. Well, and I think we, we want to keep in mind, remember, one of the things that we kind of did last time is last year, we were focusing on what was getting close to spent or overspent. But I think we also, we need to do a quick double check back on lines that have not been spent whatsoever. And in fact, when and if the chief comes on, I mean, one of those honestly is the turnout year that he asks for every year. And we've got $12,000 in that line and nothing has been spent yet. So I'd like to understand that. That would be my one question on, on tonight's expense account.
Okay, good. Well, he'll be joining as soon as he texts me so that we can ask him that.
Yeah, I, I'm, yeah, I still want to see in, in the places where we have deficits, where I know, again, we're just lacking revenue, any, any sense of how the money is coming in and how it is that how we're doing against some of these things. I know there's money coming in.
Yeah.
We just talk about the transfer, transfer station as an example. People buy, buy pack, buy, you know, permits, they buy back, they, they give tips for merchandise that they, they drop off. And yet, we see no revenue. So I don't know in the whole scheme of things where we are.
Yeah. That, that was, yeah, that was the expression too at Concom last night, asking what, what was happening with the revenue report. So I think everybody's in the same boat. So that, that has really got to be a super priority.
Well, the next item is about the FY22, but I just wanted to pause for one second and see if, Matt, did you want to give any updates from the schools? Have there been any meetings? Probably, I think it seems like it slowed down a little bit, at least as far as Norris. They were meeting like every other week at St. Mor, every, every week.
Yeah, I mean, it definitely has slowed down. I mean, there, Norris is going, is in a rigorous budget process. They, they're doing what we've asked them to do. So the finance committee will see this, which has basically come up with, you know, what, what is, come up with a budget that's, that's going to make that school the way that they want to make the school. You know, whether we want to call that part of the override budget or whether we want to try to fit that into our regular budget. I mean, that's for all of us to decide here in conjunction with the finance committee. But they're, they're coming up with their like, you know, I don't want to call it a wish list budget because these are things that they've denoted as needing. And they're, I think for once, they're coming up with, you know, rather than, and I've witnessed this now for three years or even four, because before I ran, I was, I was involved. But, you know, I found that going to school committee meetings, and I'm, and I'm not sure if it's similar in other departments, but I, but I certainly can speak for the school, having been now attending these meetings now for greater than two years, particularly at Norris, and then also just witnessing it for years before that. The, 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 the way that those meetings and budget discussions went always was similar to this. And this is, this is a sad, this is sad, I think to have to say. But it's always, we need this, but we will never get that. So, so the thought in the past has been that we won't even ask for it. Like, we're not even going to ask for it because we know we're not going to get it. And this year, I think we sent out a good message as a board and, and I think we're sticking to it in, in our approach and that I think we do want to present, I, hopefully I'm not over speaking all of you folks, but I think we did decide that we're going to put together, you know, an under two and a half quote balanced budget. And we're also going to put together an override budget for the public to consider both the town meeting and on the ballot, assuming that the sequences of this work out. And they're, they're, you know, they're going, they're going to go forward with what their budget is to, to make the school the best that it can be. I mean, it's not going to be the Taj Mahal, but they are asking for things that historically they would never ask for because they had the attitude that they would never get it. And I think when we talked about it this year and we went to each of the departments, just fairly and transparently said, what is it that you need? Ask us for everything that you need. You might not get everything you need, but please, like, you're not going to get it if you don't ask. So please ask us for what you need, provide a justification, rank order it for us and for the finance committee. And we're going to try to figure this out. And we're going to, we're going to put some of the things hopefully in our balance budget that's within the two and a half. Because God forbid, if we don't pass an override, we've still got something to go with. And then the rest of them with the, in conjunction with the finance committee, I'd like to see most, if not all of these things, assuming that we can justify them, they're fiscally responsible, and they're balanced and fair across the departments. We put them in our override budget and we, and we market and try to advocate for them. And so that's what they're doing. And we're going to, and the finance committee is going to see this. And we're going to have to parse it out. I mean, they're, they're coming with one budget. I think it's going to, you know, the percentage increase is going to be higher than normal, but they're going to come with justification for all of their needs and we're going to have to sort through what two budgets are going to go in.
Okay. Well, we'll talk about that with the next agenda item. Is there anything from Hampshire you wanted to report on?
No, I, I mean, Tammy can report on any finer details, but I mean, they've moved forward with their budget. So that's, that's kind of where it is. They're, you know, happily, you know, in, in a bit of good news here amongst this pandemic. I mean, they've got it. And I'm touched by this. I mean, they've got a really good strategy to take care of the seniors on their exit. You know, this was kind of all doom and gloom over the last couple of months, but they've pivoted and they've gotten really creative on what they're going to do to kind of celebrate the seniors and get them all together and to celebrate their success and the moving on and graduation. And these things are going to be done safely and they're working with public health departments and, and such to, to put these things together so that they can, you know, celebrate that. And, and I'm, I'm happy to see that they're, that they're spending some time doing that because I think that that's, that's important, especially after such a tough year. I mean, if Tammy has any additional details that she wanted to offer, but that, that to me was the takeaway from, or at least the happiest moment of the last meeting. The rest of it, I think, was more just bookkeeping and keeping.
And they have a new superintendent, of course.
That's what I was just going to say is that.
Sorry, that's like.
Many meetings.
I, I'm like inundated with that. So like, I just, sorry.
That was the obvious item. That was the obvious item.
But yeah.
Yeah.
New news for everybody, but kind of old news.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I get it.
Sorry.
The other, the only other thing that I would add to Matt's report that you would probably or should like to hear is that the school committees have put together several working groups. And one of them is the five districts agreement working group. And they are working on getting the five districts to have a better correlation together, working the collaboration. And it's, it's great hearing that all five towns are going to be working together on this going forward. I think that's, that's something big that it fell apart before. So that's, I wanted you guys to know that.
Can I just clarify? Are they working on improving relations between the five towns or are they, or are they relooking at the regional agreements?
Um, right now, they are taking the notes.
They're not, they're not doing the regional agreement. I mean, they're looking at cooperating on the, on, on the, you know, combined office agreement, but not necessarily.
Okay, that's what I thought. I mean, that's more of the board. That's more like, yeah. I didn't know if they were making a recommendation on it.
And that was where we saw the greatest savings in the budget was in that central office. However, they allocated those funds out has, has made a significant difference in, in, in the assessment increase that we're seeing here in Southampton. It's only going up like $60,000, which is phenomenally good for us.
Yeah. The first, the first things they're working on is the central office personnel management, the central office shared costs oversight, and then the creation of all districts coordinating committee. And that'll be an agreement to each school committee for consideration.
Yeah. I like, I like the concept of looking at the elementary schools as the feeders into the high school and having a dialogue going back and forth so that everybody, you know, is in the same lane, going in the same direction. I, I know you would intuitively think that that's what was happening, but it wasn't. And I really commend them for, for looking at that. I think we're going to be much better for it.
Good.
Good. Thanks, Matt. So the next agenda item is the fiscal 22 budget. And Ed was out sick yesterday and also today. His plan is to actually have a draft budget by Thursday of this week to send out to our select board and also the finance committee. What I think his hope for us is to have a discussion of budget priorities. For example, do you support, he seems to think that with the revenue numbers that he's clarifying now, that Budget One is doable, that the Budget One that was 2% plus contractual increases, remember, each department head was asked to put together Budget One or Two, that, that that seems achievable. And so beyond that, did anybody want to have a discussion about, for example, I'll start with my recommendations. I do know that some positions in town were rescored. And my priority would be in terms of anybody's raise would be to raise up the people who are at the lowest level. For example, people that I would support, people not being below minimum wage. And also anybody who's a department head who is a higher percentage away from the recommendation for their position. I know that there was a lot of requests for increases in salary and amounts. I don't know that we're going to be able to meet those, but I do support the lowest end of having people be at minimum wage. And I support closing the gap on the people who are very far away from the PQB's range for their position. In addition to that, I'm just curious to hear what the select board feels in terms of some of their other budget priorities beyond. And then I, I know, Matt, you had mentioned about having Budget One, but Budget Two. I wanted to mention, I don't believe you heard this, Matt, a couple of things about the budget that Ed asked me to pass along, that he did talk to KP Law and that if there are going to be ballot questions, for example, certain spending items, Proposition Two and a Half, that I think Lucy had said last time that it has to be in within 35 days of the original date for the town meeting. That's not KP Law's interpretation. They feel it's 35 days from the new date of the election. So if the election is the 22nd of June, it would be 35 days prior to that. He also has reached out to departments relative to the He also has reached out to departments relative to the capital request and asked them to be submitted to them as soon as possible. When funds come into the town, it's already been certified, the free cash, we have a bylaw that puts the money from free cash. Into operational stabilization, capital stabilization. OPAB and also. Let's see, it's ten percent, twenty-five percent, thirty-five percent, twenty-five percent. We have a bylaw that says that the money gets allocated and voted to be, uh, put into these accounts. And then a certain percentage is left in free cash. Those will be, uh, warrant articles one, two, three, four. And so, um, those numbers are already known because the free cash has already been certified. So that information will get to us and the capital committee and he's made a request for capital request. And that should be back to him by the beginning of next week. So the capital committee is free to meet and review those capital requests, but they would be on the warrant. For these, um, annual town meeting, as will be the allocation of the, um, free cash into the different departments. So the articles will be due by May fourteenth. So we're gonna have a meeting next time around with the finance committee and so what, uh, we're encouraged to do is just have a discussion about. What are our priorities as a select board or either individually or together? So would anybody else like to speak to that?
Is that meeting still scheduled for April twenty?
Yes.
Okay. And I guess, did I hear you correctly that budget one? Uh, maybe coming out with a two percent increase?
I think budget one included two percent. I think that the directive to department heads was. Put together two scenarios. Scenario one is. Two percent increases to your employees and any contractual increases. Budget two was the one that was a wish list. Am I, am I, am I right about that?
I'm not sure about that. Wasn't.
Oh, level, right, 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 okay, right.
No, budget, budget one was just, was, uh, uh, you know, level fund, level service, depending on how you look at it, plus contractual increases because there, there, there always is. And generally speaking, Ken, when we do. Level, level funds. Or level service, I mean, it really is, it, it, we're, the goal is obviously to provide level service.
Right, 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 okay, so.
Kind of mix the two things together, but I mean, the goal is to try to, we don't wanna be losing services in town, but when you do level service plus. Whatever the contractual increases are, which kind of is level service, if, if you really think about it. That, that can usually eats up all of our growth. It eats up our ability to raise taxes by two and a half percent. Plus whatever new growth there is in town in terms of new homes or businesses or whatever it is. That usually eats up all of it and then some, and then we're forced to. Make cuts off of that. I'm just speaking for history here, like, the, the number, the additional revenue, which incorporates the increase in two and a half. Percent of taxes plus the new growth is usually three to four hundred thousand dollars a year. That we have.
The, the first budget, um, that that would be, you know, definitely doable and then the select board should have a discussion about in general, do you support? One and a half percent, two percent raises, whatever. So what are, what are our priorities either individually to put forward or collectively? As, as some guidance in terms of what do we feel is important, you know, like you said, Ed, um, I mean, um, Matt. I think we should, you know, consider letting the voters decide on override, you know, scenario one, scenario two. So I think we just need to have a discussion. In the meantime, I just heard from, um, Chief Workman and he's free, um, since this involves the budget, involves, um, possibly. Uh, raising up some of his folks to minimum wage, would it be okay if I had him join and jump into that discussion first or do you wanna do this after?
Can I, can I make just one comment? It's fine to bring him, I just, just one comment while you're on this thread here of, of, um. You know, doing some, some increases for, for town employees. I'm, I'm totally in favor of that and maybe that's a two percent or. Whatever to get people at the, at the minimum wage, uh, I would, I would be supportive of that, but I think I would wanna be. A little bit cautious and say that that would take effect as of FY twenty-two, not retroactive to January.
Okay, so, um, I'm just gonna make some notes about that. Um, let's hear what, uh, John has to say about that and his proposal, I do believe it's, um. I don't see him in the meeting yet, so hang on.
Nope, not yet.
Okay, um, while we're waiting, do you want to, oh, there he is. Hi there. He's still connecting to audio. Are you with us?
Yeah, can I unmute?
Do I have to unmute him?
No, it was me, it was me.
Okay. Hi, how you doing, chief?
Oh, good, long day.
Yeah, I bet. Hey, can you start with, um, giving us the good news about the, um, grant that you obtained?
Uh, yeah, yeah, it was a.
Earlier.
Yeah, it was a safety grant, um, but I don't have the exact figure in front of me, um, twelve thousand dollars. For safety equipment, which will be, uh, gear and some helmets, um, some things that fell into the parameter of the grant. Gear is always a challenge, just because although we do have a line item for it. As, uh. It's difficult because gear is very expensive. We can't afford to get it all at one time. And then the problem with getting it all at one time is it all expires at the, that one time. Um, so we've been playing catch up for a number of years. This really, um, brings us up so that we're really current and so the budget line item should really. Keep us going for as long as we need to replace gear, um, but we've now caught up with the people that were falling behind. So it was a tremendous grant to get. Twelve thousand and change, um, really helped us out and, um, it's tremendous to, it's keeping, keeping firefighters safe. As they go into calls, so very happy with that, yeah.
Okay, excellent. Um, any questions about that?
I was just gonna ask a question if I could. John, is, does this supplement the, the turnout gear that's the budget line that you have? Cause.
It does. And, and the problem with the budget line is, you know, it, it, the budget line only buys three sets of gear. And that seemed like a good number, um, just because. I don't, you, you don't wanna spend too much each year, not that you could spend too much, but I didn't wanna ask for. So much money. That I would then, as it went in through the years, I didn't wanna be buying more gear than we needed, so I put it on the low end when I put it into the budget. The problem with putting it on the low end is, um, we've never had extra money in the expense account to catch us up to a point where. The active firefighters all have current gear. And so though, we've been catching up on it here, it's, it's keeping some of the, the gear that has, uh, expired, that's been replacing it. But we never got to a point where the people that needed it all had the current gear. The budget would keep them in current gear through the years. And so that's where it was, where it's set on the budget line item. But with this grant, it now enables us to catch up with and have everyone that needs to be in current gear, in current gear. And will allow us to buy current gear as we need it. Each year as it goes on to perpetuity. Does that make sense? I'm sorry for complicating, it's been a long day.
No, it's fine. Yeah, no, and I think I, I just had brought it up because as we were looking at the expense report, I just had noted that there hadn't been any. Uh, anything expensed against that line item yet and I was thinking that was a priority, so.
Yeah, it is a priority, um, mostly one, one of the challenges we have, I do have one of my captains, um, who, um, it's one of his focuses. We had a change in manufacturer, um, we were having some problems with delays, um, when we ordered gear and as we sent people the academy, it's a requirement that they had gear. And, and, and we're having six month backlogs to get it. So we've just, um, we were going through some new, uh, vendors. To see that the, the gear was comparable to what we have, we're getting, um, and costs were similar. And basically that, you know, that, as we move forward to the department, we will, we like consistency. So we don't change gear lightly. So we wanted to make sure that we, the gear that we are currently, the vendor that we're currently using is one that we're gonna be happy with to move forward with. So that was the delay, it's just. Some of the time it took to really vet the vendors, if you will.
Good, thanks.
Yep, sure.
Okay, so the agenda item that we're here to talk about is fire, fire department wage matrix, um, and the update of the minimum wage. And I mentioned at the beginning that the minimum wage, um, increased to thirteen fifty an hour. It does not apply specifically to municipal employees, that's, uh, an optional thing. And Francine said at the beginning that, um, the PQB approved the PCFs for. Those employees, so we're just gonna have a discussion about, uh. Wage thing and how it impacts the fire department.
Absolutely, yep, yep.
So would you like to start, um, chief and talk a little bit about, um. The PCFs that you sent forward and what your hope would be?
Yeah, certainly. So, uh, the challenge is, uh, with any fire department, all fire departments is, you know, personnel, retention of personnel. Getting people to come out at three in the morning, uh, risk their lives potentially as they go into, um, uh, dangerous environments. It's, it's a calling. Um, you, you, you do it because you're crazy and, um, and you wanna help a community. You know, I, I, I think a lot of fire departments started on, on a volunteer basis. And that worked very well for many years, you know, in the fifties, I think it was, you know, there was really, um, a lot of that. Uh, I, I myself started as a volunteer. It, it's, it's a good part, a way to be part of a community. The challenge this day and age is that it's harder, you don't have as many people at home. During the hours when you need people to respond to a fire. More and more people, you know, both, um, uh, you know, mom and dad, um, are working. And, uh, making ends meet, um, is, is a challenge for folks and so they prioritize. Uh, a second job over, uh, volunteering in a fire department and it's just, it's an ongoing challenge and, and for everyone now. You know, as societal challenges because the dynamics of society have changed. So we're competing with that. I mean, you still, it takes a certain kind of person to wanna give up, you know, their Super Bowl weekends and like I say, middle of the night calls. And if, as we find those people, um, it helps them. With their family lives, uh, i- if we can at least pay them minimum wage. If, if someone can go and flip a burger for minimum wage and then, uh. You know, rush into a house for less than minimum wage, that doesn't feel like a good. A balance, it doesn't, doesn't feel right. Uh, the other is, you know, as, you know, even, even a, a basic EMT. You know, they're currently, our basic EMT is at fifteen sixty-one, I believe. And, um, minimum wage in two years is gonna be fifteen dollars. You're, we're asking someone to keep up with all of the regulations in regards to, um, medical control. The requirements of certification to be EMT and although EMT is, you know, kind of a, a four month program that you go through, it's not a paramedic, which is. The highest level of pre-hospital care that you can get. Um, you're, there's still the expectation that, that, that a basic. Uh, call is a cardiac call where they're doing CPR, resuscitation. And, you know, we're, we're, it's just, we're, we're, that's the expectation of a first responder as well. And, and, and to not pay them minimum wage. But really trying to keep them vested, um, keep their families whole. It seems as minimum wage, i- if they can offer it at Burger King, we should be able to offer it here in the department. And it's been successful. I mean, we've, we've got folks that are here. And, and the wage that they're earning, uh, going with the minimum wage has been helpful for them. So I just feel that it's fair. For the department to go that direction. The costs are, um. They're not extravagant costs, I mean, if, if you, um, looked at those firefighters, that that would affect. I'm shooting from the hip a little bit, but it, it might be, uh, uh, a two thousand dollar increase to a five hundred thousand dollar wage line item. So it's not, it's not a, a major impact and it feels fair for the families and the folks that really step up for the community to come out into a dangerous environment.
So it's the federal minimum wage that went up to thirteen fifty and it's as of January one, right?
Uh, yes, so it'd be retro to January one and, and honestly, um. The, the, the folks have been understanding because there was supposed to be an increase in minimum wage last year. My fault, I missed it, I'm, but, and, and it's very difficult for us as a community because nobody has money to go back a year. So I'm actually bringing it up to the minimum wage just starting in January.
So, um, what I said at the beginning, um, before you joined was that, uh, what Ed said was that the number of people that are currently below that minimum wage amount. Are basically one employee in the senior center and the senior center, uh, staff feel that that money. Is available within their budget to pay if there was a vote to go back, uh, retroactive. I believe you had said that the money is in your budget to be able to pay this, so it wouldn't necessarily have to come from some other place. Then the only other employees are the library, um, employees, which are, um. Employees and I don't know if the budget would include, um, a retroactive pay to them and then the other one is the election workers. And I don't have the figure on that, but what I was told by Ed was that the total amount, if the decision was to, uh. Follow through with the request of going retroactive would be in the nature of fifteen hundred to two thousand. And then it would be, uh, a lot of the departments feel that it's within their own budget. So. Anything else I'm missing or something else that anybody else knows about this, uh, request?
No, I just have a question. I guess just, um, to get an idea how many people we're talking about and I, are they all the firefighters or are there some others as well? And how far below is like your worst case, below the thirteen fifty?
For me, I, I, I wanna say that there's one that's at, it, it should be eleven dollars, but it, it, when I went through wage accounts, it looked like there was one person at ten, so. For, for some of, of those folks, it will be a substantial, um, increase. Minimum wage was eleven dollars was the last time that we had moved it up to the minimum wage, uh, figure. But yeah, I believe this year, you know, should be able to, you know, it all depends on what we get for calls, um, of course, but it, it, it shouldn't be any. Impact, any major impact on, on budgets. I mean, budgets are tight, cares, um, and the extra. That we've done, not really even affecting these minimum wage people, but more the paramedics and the extra hours of cares. Some of that's been, we'll get. We'll get money back from some of that because I have put in for reimbursement for cares funding. So it's hard to tell where, uh, budgets will fall, but I do not expect it to be any. Way of major impact and will probably be absorbed in my budget and should not be a problem. That answer your question, I'm sorry, I don't mean to go around, I am tired, it's just been, been a long night.
No, and, and we're talking about half a dozen or so of the firefighters.
Yeah, yeah, half, yeah, half a dozen, yeah, yeah, not, not a major complement of, of folks.
That, that's what I was gonna say, I counted, uh, I counted six.
Yeah, that's, that sounds right. I'm shooting from the hip because I don't have it in front of me, but that sounds right.
But one thing that it explained to me too, like, let's say you have two employees, one of them's at twelve and one of them's at twelve fifty. And the reason that one may, they might be at par except that one of them has additional certification in something, so they're actually getting an additional compensation. So they would move not only to thirteen fifty, but an additional fifty cents.
Yes. Yeah, because.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, I'm sorry, don't mean to interrupt. Um, we, we have, um, there's incentives, so if someone does. Additional training, there's actually a, a Hampshire County training that's offered and they dedicate, uh, six weekends to a training program. Which just, uh, gives them more skills as a firefighter, um, which makes them safer, the department safer and, 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 and better. Quality of work, um, when they're working a fire scene. They get fifty cents if they go through that additional two and then we, there's a fire academy that they can go to. If they go to the fire academy, which is basically along the lines of a professional firefighter. It's what they call firefighter one and two, it's a national standard. If they achieve that national standard. We give them a dollar and a half raise over the base rate. If they've already gotten the Hampshire County fifty cents, then they only increase by a dollar because it's sort of all some of the same training. But that's the matrix that we use currently. And so that, that's the disparity. So some folks that would go to thirteen fifty, others that have this additional Hampshire, uh, county training. Or additional firefighter training, we get a, a proportionate to the matrix.
And if I remember correctly, uh, the six, I think there were only two in that category, I think.
Yeah, for some reason I feel like there may be a couple more than that, but it's not dramatic. You, if you're looking at it, then whatever it is, you have the PCFs in front of you. I'm sorry, I just got out of a meeting, so I have them directly in front of me, but. I'm sorry, I just got out of a meeting, so I have them directly in front of me, but it is whatever it is. So it's two or three, is what I believe.
And I realized after I said it that it's the state minimum wage, not the federal that has been increased.
Yes, state, not federal. Yeah, federal is actually down at about $7 per hour or something ridiculous. And that's, you know, Massachusetts has taken their own initiatives. So I'm just trying to stay competitive with the folks in the department, given that time with the Massachusetts wage.
Okay. Any other questions or comments about this request? We don't have the PCFs in front of us at all, but this is we in general support. And then in addition to this, how do you feel about the other employees in town that are also at minimum wage? Another question to think about is, so if someone's at 1350 and if we do, you know, decide we're going to go ahead and do a 2% raise, would they, would you support retroactive? Would you support only starting July 1? If they are retroactive at 1350 and then July 1 comes and there's support for 2%, it would mean going from 1350 to 1377 is 2%. Just so you know, I just think that's important. I just mentioned that if there is support for retroactive then, and if we decide to prioritize raises for all employees, that that would involve them potentially.
Just speaking as a department head, I know that the folks, you know, they're committed to the town. They're, you know, they're town residents, all of them that are on there. And they're, they're going to be, they're going to feel validated and supported by the town to get the minimum wage increase that's there. I think the 2% isn't a major focus for them. So if it just went to July 1st, I'm sure, I can only speak for my folks in the fire department, I'm sure they'd be happy with that. They're going to feel supported just by your decision to make minimum wage something that should be for firefighters as well as McDonald's employee.
What other questions or comments? Ken, I certainly welcome any comment or question that you have also. Anybody have any questions for Chief or suggestions or motions or anything?
I just want to understand the start date from you. Were you saying they would, if we, they would feel validated if it started July 1?
Well, that's when, that's when the state minimum wage went up.
Oh, you're talking about July 1, 2020?
No, 21. I'm saying let's just make it good from this point forward.
July 1, 2021.
And not retroactive to January, like, okay.
You know, I would just make, I mean, I think it's great that you folks are looking at that for the entire town. You know, I certainly don't know the intricacies of, you know, libraries, the kind of people, but it is, it's validating for the, you know, people that serve the community. I think that's, that's, you know, I appreciate that, you know, as a community member. I think that, like I say, just from my guys, you know, whether it goes back to 20, I mean, or 21, I'd say, given our tight budgets, I think they'll be happy if it just goes to starting January of this year. I think that would be fine. But it's, but at least the precedent is set that we'll go with the increases because they're going to be increases next January. And I think that, you know, we're going to have to look at these increases, you know, and I think they're fair, but they're challenging to assess to our budgets for all the departments. But it's a good move for the community.
What I find strange is that it's a state thing and everybody's 351 communities, their fiscal year starts July 1. Why the heck could they do that as of January 1?
Because that's the state.
So just to be, just to be clear, John, with that, am I understanding then that you think that between, if this were to be retroactive, that between the January and June 2021 period, you could cover that out of your current budget? And then going forward, it would be part of the budget that we're going to be discussing very soon for FY22?
Yeah, it's, it itself is not a major impact. I think some of the, the major impacts to my budget are more just, you know, the ongoing, the extra time for some of the pandemic issues. Just because those are my higher wage earners, the paramedics and such. So any impact to my budget won't be from these folks earning minimum wage. It'll really be from other factors.
Right. It's always the higher wage earners.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I don't want to say that, you know, oh, I won't have any impact to my budget for wages. But it won't be significantly affected by, by what we're talking about with the minimum wage increase.
Yeah. I guess I'm just thinking, you know, given the across-the-board cuts we had to make last year during the last year's budget exercise, to go back now and just, just take this one thing and try to give it an increase when we really can't do much for other departments would be a bit difficult. But if there were a way to take that increase out of your current budget, then that's a bit, you know, a bit more palatable than.
Yeah, I'd say with, yeah, I would say that, you know, I think, I certainly think they deserve it. I think it'll be minimal impact for the people that we're talking about. I think that hopefully that some of this cares funding, because I've been able to write off some of my wages to the cares funding. So, you know, we took a hit last year to try and balance the budget and that's, honestly, it's a challenge. And it's hard because I can't, you know, it's not set hours, you know, if there's a fire, if there's an incident, you know, to, my wages are going to, going to fluctuate with incidents. So if there's a fire, I mean, I have 20 people that come to a fire. And so all of a sudden, however long they work there, that's a pretty good increase, unexpected increase that I can't, it's like a snowstorm. You can't really budget for it well because you don't know what it's going to be. So the, taking a cut on the budget was difficult. I'm hoping that it will all balance out because we've been able to get some money back from the cares funding that came through and I've been able to write some of the wages off to the cares. So I'm hoping that that'll all work well, but I can't guarantee you. I don't want to tell you that, oh yeah, definitely, this isn't a problem. You know, I mean, I'm assuming that it'll balance, but the only way for me to tell, because I don't have any kind of crystal ball to see what events may happen, I couldn't absolutely guarantee it. Wouldn't want you to think that I could do that because there's, I have no control over events, emergency events that might necessitate.
Can I just ask for clarification?
Sure.
Then in July, on July 1, what is your expectation for these people who will be getting brought up to 1350 an hour? An additional 2% or you're happy with the? I sort of thought I heard you say that they would be okay going forward after July 1 with just the 1350. Did I mishear that?
I think it's relatively nominal at some point. The big, the big raises really to bring them to minimum wage. I think that you folks need to decide, I mean, is a 2% a good thing for the community? And that's a challenge that you've got to look at. And if you can afford that for the town, I think that that's good.
That's a whole nother.
I think, I think for me, the issue is really just, you know, that minimum wage issue getting there. If you decide for the community, 2% on top of that, that's, you're going to have to work those numbers. That's not my budget's or budget or our budget or whatever town's budget. So I have to put that back to you, what the town can afford. But the minimum wage is, is my big concern, just so I'm competitive for folks and families.
Okay. Yeah, I think there, those are two different issues, the 1350 and then the 2% is a whole nother ballgame, I guess.
But I agree.
Can I get a clarification? Are we talking about July 1 or January 1? So the 1350 is going to commence as of July 1st is?
You know, it would be fair and equitable if it started when, with, and was in conjunction with the state's change. So the state changed January 1st. So I'd like, I'd like to see that change.
Is that what's on your PCF?
Honestly, I'm not sure if that's what's on my PCF. I would have to look only because it was more concerned with getting it, the paperwork and, and getting the minimum wage in place. I'd have to look back just because of the date that I put. But I can certainly, you know, I can.
To us next time. I think our charge tonight is to have a conversation about it with your president for explanation and to have a conversation about whether we support it in general. Do we support it for fire? Do we include the other people that are less than minimum wage? Do we support it starting January 1 or July 1? So that's kind of what our charge is tonight. In the absence of a PCF, we just want to discuss among ourselves what level of support we feel we want to put forward.
Yeah, yeah. And the financial impact to it. Like I say, I don't, I don't think whether we went to January 1 or July 1. I mean, I think it's fair to go January 1 and I, I don't feel it would be a major impact to my budget if that helps you to make those decisions.
And like I said before, the, their election workers are less than minimum. There has not been any, any work by election workers up till now, but of course, as we know, there will be one in June. And, and then there's just one employee of the senior center. And I understand that is possible in their budget to cover that retroactive. And then there is substitutes in the library. So we're not talking about a lot of people. We're not talking about a lot of money. And I don't know if the library or town clerk's office has the money to support raising up the election workers prior to the June election. Up till now, there's been no, there would be zero money in direction of the election workers. So does anybody want to chime in that hasn't yet about either a question for the chief or your support for these, Francine?
No, I just want to, I just want to chime in here. I have the PCFs in front of me and they are retroactive to January 1.
You know, typically I don't support mid-year raises because the DOR doesn't recommend that. But because it's the state, I believe people should get a living wage. I think the fire department in particular is competing with other towns for employees, their on-call people. I basically think people should get a living wage. And so I would support this if the departments are able to pay for it for January till July, and then we'll cross the July bridge when we talk about the budget in general. So I'm in support of a retroactive pay for all people that are below minimum wage in town.
Yeah, I would, I would join in that as long as we make it across the other departments that are in the similar situation. So libraries, COA and election workers, if that's what we need to do, it's got to be fair across the board, I think.
Yeah, the only concern becomes whether or not these other departments don't have, you know, the room in their.
Yeah, but that's stipulated, but that's.
Operating budgets to cover it, that's all.
But that's, they have to. I mean, if they're going to do it, that's part of the, that's part of it.
Right, right.
Right, right. And like I said, I know that senior center does and if fire does, then we're talking about substitutes to the library. Would have to find out how many hours that is and how much that involves. And the same with the election workers. Right now it's a zero balance. So do we bring them up, you know, after this next election? That'll depend on the amount of money in their budget, I guess. So anyway, I think there seems to be general support for it, especially if it doesn't negatively impact the existing budget. And we'll look forward to seeing those PCFs next meeting.
Good. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for joining us after a long day.
Take care.
Okay, later. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
So back to the FY22 budget scenario. So department heads were asked to present two budgets. One was level funded and the other one was, you know, this is what I think my department needs budget. And according to Ed, he thinks the revenue is there to support a raise for municipal employees, you know, 1.5 to 2%. And then what he's interested in hearing from the select board is, other than that, what are strong priorities on the part, or what are things that you think shouldn't be funded? And are you interested, like Matt said, in saying, we want to be able to put it to the voters and let them decide? This is the balanced budget and this is an override budget. You decide. So I think that what we're trying to do is have that discussion now so that when we meet next week with the finance committee, it'll be much more looking at an Excel spreadsheet.
Yeah, I'll just go first. For me, there's no question that I do want to offer an override budget. I would like to see it be a collective override budget so that things can't, so that departments can't be pitted against one another. That's the way we did it last time. Where if we're going to propose an override budget that incorporates, it's not individual questions by department. It is one collective question for the entire town, if that makes sense. And I'd like to see that. I mean, and just to be clear, like, what I'm not suggesting is, is that whatever everybody comes back to us with as, as a need, just automatically goes into that budget. Like we, there's, there's likely to be, I would imagine, needs that the departments feel that they need and they provide justification for that. The finance committee comes back with being like, look, like, if we really want to put forth a fiscally responsible override budget and have a chance of passing this, and also to have it be defensible to the voters, like, this isn't going to be able to be in it. And so we do need to do that work. It can't just be like, here's our balanced budget at 2.5, everything else goes in there and we just don't do any work on this.
Right.
You know? But I do, I personally really want to propose both, like, that's where I think we're, we're at. I honestly feel like we also should have done this, not last year. I mean, we discussed this, I think, last year because of COVID and their families were hurting and everybody was hurting. I mean, myself included, so. But, you know, I think we should be, and I'm not suggesting doing this regularly, but I think that, I think these are decisions that the voters should really decide on what type of town they want to have with the services that we, that we have presently, that I think we have trouble affording. And also the services that we want in the future. I mean, it, you know, I like to think that the five of us or the four of us right now have a good pulse on this. But like, at the end of the day, like, we have a very good voter turnout in this town. We've had for at least the past four major elections. I mean, we just, everybody turns out to vote. So let's, let's do our part and do the hard work, but let's let them decide.
Okay. Thanks, Matt. Chris or, okay, Ken, go ahead.
Just a question, Matt, as far as terminology, when you say override budget, is that, does that relate to budget two that we're looking at?
Yeah. So just to back up a little bit and folks just fill in if you, because I trip over myself sometimes here. But Ken, like by law, by state law dating back to like the 80s, municipal government in Massachusetts is not allowed to increase taxes by more than 2.5% in any fiscal year. Like, we are not allowed to do that. We can increase taxes up to that, but we cannot go over without what is coined the term as an override voted on by at town meeting and passed at town meeting. Once it passes at town meeting, it's got to go to the ballot box to increase taxes by more than 2.5%. So if we're going to do that, it's got to be presented at town meeting and then it's got to pass at the ballot box. So you kind of have to go with the public with two budgets because you have to have a contingency plan, which falls at or under the 2.5%, which we're legally able to do without, without a vote, without voting. Like, that's what we're allowed to do as elected officials. To go above that, we need town meeting vote and a ballot box vote and it needs to pass by, by majority. And so.
I want to just respond to what Ken asked, and that is, do I see the override vote as being, vote as being column number two? Not at all. I think some of the requests in the column two, I won't support. I don't think that they were all realistic, frankly. So I think, you know, we can't, we can't submit an override budget to the town that is pie in the sky. I mean, I think we have to be responsible about, you know, if every single department head asks for a 20% raise, are we just going to submit that to the town? No. I think we have to have guidance. We have to have a mutual conversation with the finance committee around, I mean, you all met with every single department head, you know, or to really flush out some of the things. We have some guidance with salary scales and ranges. And, you know, I think we have to make, you know, good decisions around what's realistic. And that's basically what we had to do last time. We had to, there was an override budget, but it was one that was.
Yeah, it was very trimmed down.
And it really has to be something that's equitable across the board.
But the budget, the budget now is going to come to select board after Ed gets through massaging it.
Right.
You know, based on what comes out of our meetings.
Yep.
And then it's your decision beyond that. You massage that.
Yep.
Yes, that's true.
That you feel is appropriate.
Yes, but if I might say something, and I don't know if we can do this as a matter of course here, but it would be great to see, to have this be more of a collective effort. I have not enjoyed this not being a collective effort in years past. And so if it is possible to have this, to have these decisions, so like, can we have joint, are we allowed? to have these decisions, so like, can we have joint, are we allowed to have, I'm not saying joint votes. I get that this falls ultimately to the select board and that we've got to decide on this, but can we, can we have a process now, starting this year, where when we start discussing the budget, we have joint meetings with the finance committee, we have friendly debate back and forth. It ultimately falls to the decision of the select board. It's not going to be a collective overall vote between finance committee and select board, but I don't want to be doing this without with being, you know, Ken's the only liaison to it. I think we should have all of the finance committee meeting.
There's a joint meeting next Tuesday, the weeks from tonight.
Sure, but are we going to decide this in one meeting? Like, let's do this every meeting until we find?
Yep, I think that we're, we haven't gotten revenue numbers yet. I mean, I don't think that we're, you know, I don't know that we've been able to do too much up till now, but the plan is, and we have to really pay close attention to these dates, then, you know, the plan will be that we will have a conversation with the finance committee next week or two weeks from tonight. I anticipate we're going to be going line by line over the budget that Ed has presented to us and that we have a chance to review before the meeting. And whether we go by category for general government or fire, police, whatever, we will be looking very closely at the line items of the budget proposal.
Yeah, sure.
I'd like to say that I think it's very important that we hear the recommendations of the finance committee. A, since they've met with department heads and though we, so just by virtue of that communication can, you know, provide us with some insight. And, and I, and I agree, I'd like to see it as a joint process, not, not as a, you know, competitive kind of thing. I would like us to be able to come together.
Yeah, so, so Francine, to that point, like that's totally true and we should do that, and we're going to hear those things. But at the end of the day, we all know, sitting here, because this happens every year, we're going to come down to tough decisions, right? And, and when we come down to those tough decisions, are we going to have the finance committee next to us? My hope is, is that the answer is yes, because at the end of the day, the finance committee knows that we're going to have to make tough decisions. What I don't want to be doing is making those tough decisions in the dark, in the darkness of the night, which this will inevitably come to, and us assuming what the finance committee's priorities were. Like, I would always like to have, given they met with the department heads, given that they have their order list of priorities, when we are getting down to brass tacks and having to make difficult decisions, which we're going to have to do, that it is in collaboration with the finance committee and the week hours of the night. Not assuming what we think that they said to us. And that may not be true.
Were you going to say something, Ken?
Yeah, I would, it's, you're right. We have talked with the department heads and it's come out loud and clear, at least in, in two or three of them, that, you know, status quo is status quo. But there is so much on the, on their plate, and I think you mentioned something about this, Matt, with the school saying, well, we've got all these things that we'd love to have, but we know we're not going to get them. And, you know, there becomes this element of, you know, hearing, you know, we got to keep these roads clean and well repaired so people can travel. But, you know, at what point do you say, well, I'm not going to worry about that because I haven't got the money to do it? So I think there's a lot of discussion and, and I agree. I think that it comes down to the maintenance of the bottom line, with all due respect, becomes, I think, really a mutual decision. I mean, you guys are going to, you folks are going to have the final decision, but to have both groups together, I think is is paramount. No question about it.
And not just an initial meeting, but through the process to the point where we have the two budgets.
Exactly, yep.
Well, the time, right, if April 20th is the next time we meet, you know, the time after that, I mean, if I'm doing the math correctly here, the ballot question is due 35 days. If it's a ballot question, it has to be submitted 35 days from the date of the election, which is the 22nd. We're talking about early May.
May 14th, May 17th, in that range.
But the town warrant articles have got to be done by May 4th, no?
Right, right. So we have a very short timetable and I imagine we're not going to end up with an extra meeting after the 20th.
I think we are.
We definitely are.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, and to the extent that, you know, Ed gets, you know, a draft budget together, you know, enough ahead of time, and we could conceivably maybe have a, an emergency-type meeting or a special meeting before the 20th if we had to, right?
Finance committee will be meeting on it. You'll be getting it hopefully this week from Ed, the consolidated budget, correct? You're meeting on Monday.
Yep.
And then sometime after Monday, if we wanted to squeeze in an initial meeting before the 20th.
The 13th, don't forget, next week is the hazard mitigation dates. One of them is Tuesday and one of them is and actually I have a conflict because there's an open space review committee meeting on the 15th.
Well, Buzzard is hazard mitigation too.
We've been waiting for this hazard mitigation thing.
Wednesday in between?
I could definitely do the 14th. I mean, do you, what do you want to do? Right now, we have a combined meeting. I don't know, I haven't seen it posted, but Ken, you'll have to post a finance committee meeting for the 20th.
Yes.
And we can sort of pare down the agenda as much as possible to make a focus on the budget. Especially if we end up doing 20 and 27? Or do we need to meet before the 20th? I'm just not sure about Ed's situation, to be honest with you, so.
Right. Well, I just want to make sure that our meetings on this topic are joint going forward, so we're kind of in this boat together. I'm happy to schedule another meeting and then we can always cancel it.
Can I make a recommendation? I mean, for anyone who's available, you could, you could listen in to the finance committee meeting on, on Monday and kind of get up to speed in that regard. You know, that wouldn't be a joint meeting per se, but listening in might, might help.
But can we listen, can we listen in and not have a quorum, though?
Oh, right. Yeah, if you're not deliberating, if you don't, if you, I think I'm not deliberating. I'm cautious about that. Is it 5:30 or 6?
5:30.
On Monday, the 12th?
Yes.
Yep, 5:30.
Yep.
So I think that right now I'll plan for a meeting on the 20th and I'll plan for a meeting on the 27th.
Okay.
Safe bet. And if the finance committee can be a part of both of those meetings, that would be perfect.
Okay, super.
And I think that we'll try as much as we can to pare down the rest of the budget items and really focus on budget for these next two meetings, with the hope that would have something to go forward. Is there anybody that wants to propose anything to Ed in terms of a priority that he should take into consideration in terms of his draft? But like I said, my preference would be to get people up for minimum wage, to give municipal employees a raise, and to narrow the gap on the department heads who are far off from their step and percentage. For example, the senior center director is a perfect example. She makes much, much less than any other director in town. I know her position was just re-scored too, so that'll bring it up. But that, those are my priorities. I mean, I'm sure I have other ones, but I know that until we have a commitment for like an override or, you know, more discussed, those are my big ones.
No, the only thing on my mind is just, you know, coming out of the, out of the tech committee that whatever, I don't have any figures, but to keep on supporting the communication upgrade in town, within town hall, whatever that entails from the computer, you know, voiceover, IP network, whatever is going to be coming, or the website improvement, all of that. I would just want us to try and allocate some, some money to that. And honestly, depending on how much of a priority we feel that the old town hall outside of the building is, there might need to be some money toward at least a first step on preserving the brickwork.
No, that could be, your committee there could support a capital request, right?
Yep. Okay, okay.
Yes.
That might, I, I think that would be a good consideration. I mean, I think we have these funds that, you know, we'll be meeting, they're going to be looking at all the requests, and I think that a lot of the changes that happened to Norris were funded through capital request.
Okay, good to know. Okay, thanks. I'll keep that in mind.
And if any identifiable items that are in the proposed budgets that could fit into that category, that would be a good way for us to to offload that.
Okay, good, thanks.
How about Francine?
Pardon?
How about you? Did you want to propose any priorities?
Well, I, I know you mentioned the, you know, the discrepancies in, in, you know, in some of the salaries, and you mentioned department heads. I would like to see it, you know, go through it across the board for all employees, so that those who seem to have the largest gap would be the ones that have priority. And I think one of the things we need to start to do is think about developing some kind of forward-looking plan, like how are we going to get there? We can't do everything this year. But I think if we look at setting priority from one year to the next, we're going to do this this year for this group of people and the following year, hopefully they bring, bring us up to speed. I look at the, the salaries that the, our chief just put in his grid, and I'm, you, you saw that, what, what, what people were making in the, in the grid, that they're making $18 an hour, and we're, you know, we're making, maybe our workers are making 15. I mean, that's something, I, I don't know how we can get at more data that would help us do this. That was one of the requests that we had for the DLTA grant, but that was not something they were interested in funding, but we do need to be looking into that.
Can you, can you explain what you meant by the grid? What were you referring to?
There was something in our packet.
Yeah.
Our chief, it was
I thought. It was one of the, one of the first documents in the
Yeah, the grid that he put in where he just summarized the salaries by, by position and, you know, extrapolated in, in, you know, future years. And we need, if, if that's the way things are going, we need to be planning for that, not just for the fire department, just looking overall.
Yeah.
But I'm hoping that this, this HR resource thing is something that all can, is really feasible and can be a benefit, because we certainly could use the help in getting ourselves, you know, focused and directed and in step with, with what is the, you know, our emerging needs.
Okay. Anybody else want to?
Yeah.
Anything, yeah, Matt?
Yeah, so, I mean, I agree with, I agree with all of you folks. I think that those are really high priorities. I also feel an additional priority, and, and we've seen this kind of in the past, I think we, I think we have to focus on the 400 children that we have in our elementary schools and the fact that they have lost. I think it's inarguable how much time they've lost in school this year and the fact that they've had to be asked to be very resilient, very flexible in their form of education. We've asked a lot of the teachers and the administration to be able to pull off what has been pulled off this year. I think we'd be lying to ourselves if we are pretending that we somehow provided 100% of the education that these kids deserve in each of the grades, K through preschool through sixth grade, and that there's going to be some learning loss here that we're going to have to address. And I think we know from the past that, you know, we, we've had these discussions before where we try to prevent people from going out of district because we want to be able to provide the services in from town, and we understand the costs associated with those out-of-district placements. I think we should spend time this year, and I know the finance committee will do this, like listening to the, we have a really good school committee in place that's responsible, that has good debate. Some of you have been to some of these meetings. Good negotiations, like I think we do need to spend some time really deeply thinking about the recommendations that are coming, that will be coming out from the school in order to try to get ahead of what ultimately will be, I would imagine, some type of a tidal wave here over the next couple of years as we absorb the blow and the effects of this pandemic on nearly 400 kids at the Norris Elementary School. And, you know, for me, I'd like to see, I'd like to see us chip away at this. I don't know is that we're going to get, get all the way there this year, but I think we'd be silly to not think that those kids are going to need something coming up ahead of this to try to drag them out and catch them back up. And I think that the school people are working hard on this, and I think we really need to focus on this. Because if we don't, I think we're going to be, I think we'll be in trouble if, if we don't. I mean, we, we know what's been going on with our school and, and what we've been trying to, to fix with regard to our budget and, you know, the discrepancies there that sometimes happen with that regional school agreement. And I, I just think that we really need to make sure that we're taking care of our own elementary school.
I totally agree. I also think Hampshire Regional has done a really good job the last few years. There was a long pattern of they get what they want and the rest is distributed amongst the different departments in town. And I think that they've made a really, really, they've done a great job the last few years with trying to keep the budget less than two and a half. Ways to, to support the rest of it.
No, I totally agree. I to- I totally agree. And so I, I just, I want to make sure that we're, I mean, that they, they can't vote for themselves. It's important. It affects the rest of our depart, if we don't take care of the, the children in that school specifically with regard to the chance of out-of-district placement at $60,000, $70,000 a kid when you include tuition and transportation, like it, it takes from everywhere else, right? So I just want to make sure that we're, kid, you know, kids are not falling behind and the kids that we can take care of, we take care of. It's, it's better for all.
Is, is Norris going to be presenting their budget to finance on Monday, then?
We don't know yet. I just started communication today that, you know, that was still up in the air.
They're still working on it. I know they're still deliberating it. It's been heated.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds good. I mean, I think these are great recommendations. I think there's a lot of, you know, all of us are in, you know, agreement on a lot of what we've talked about. And I think that I will summarize this with, for Ed and send it out to him and ask him to get out his draft budget by the end of the week. And then that'll help the finance committee for Monday, it'll help us. Really, right now, we'll plan a meeting on the 20th and on the 27th.
Maureen, can I add just one other thing? You know, just from the standpoint of considerations. I agree with, you know, trying to set up the matrix and get all the matrices out there so that everybody's falling into right scales and so forth and so on. That takes data and it takes time, but I think in the meantime, serious consideration for COLA
Yeah.
increase. I hear, you know, some of the meetings like the Triple P. People are upset that they haven't had a raise, you know, in two or three years. And I think it's important that at least we get something in their pockets, you know, while we're still trying to get the matrix together, if we will.
Yeah, I agree. Actually, they did have a raise the year before last.
Okay, well, it's, I guess over the last three years or so, there's been
Yeah, there's been one.
There have been issues, yep. Anyways.
Thanks to an override, but I thank you. I think everybody's pretty much in agreement that getting, giving municipal employees a raise is important. Here's the issue that I wanted to have Francine try to help us understand. So we had two competing charts going. One was like this Jacob study that was presented a while ago. And then the other is the Personal Policies and Procedure Board chart. And my understanding is that that has been used to give recommendations for where people's pay should land. And then it was created in 2017, but has not been updated with any of the increases. And there really haven't been a lot of increases, like you just said, Ken, so there might be one or two increases that have happened. And PQB never voted over the course of, you know, time to change the grids or the table when the raises happened. So the question is, if you end up bringing people up to what they might have gotten based on the 2%, then we're talking about anybody hired since 2017, right?
Right.
Because everybody, you know, so that's the question I have, like where do we stand, Francine? And I agree with you, that's data. We, like, we don't even know, like if I'm saying I support people who are the farthest away from the, you know, the mid-range of the chart that they're on, how do we get the information about this is where everybody is, this is how far they're off from the range, and at what point to increase those numbers to compensate for them not being changed when the COLA raised happened in the past?
Okay. Well, let me, let me just say that Okay. Well, let, let me just say that, um, and, and can you chime in? Cause he's, he's also on the PQB, um, that they have updated those scales for exempt and non-exempt that were approved back in two thousand and seventeen. So they updated at the rate of two percent a year from two thousand and seventeen, and they projected out to two thousand and thirty. I mean, that's, that's how much has gone into it. It has not been sent yet to the, uh, finance committee or to the select board yet in terms of recommendations, but they did do all of those calculations, uh, based on that. They did not, and, and I am not, you know, not maybe the best person to speak to why not, um, but they were not interested, and I'll say they, members of the PQB were not interested in updating the Jacob study, the one that we heard from Art that he presented in two thousand and nineteen, which had more recent information in. And really did do, and I thought, a nice job of comparing the positions by title. And it was plotting people so that we really had a, 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 a good sense of where we were okay, where we were far behind, you know, it, it put things in perspective for us. And looking at these other scales, don't do that for us. And somehow taking the data from those scales and moving it into this other, to the, to, to that other m- model that, that Art presented, I think would give us a better picture. But I don't know exactly who, who might be able to do that, but we need a better picture.
Okay, can I ask you to clarify something? Did you just say that the PQB, starting with two thousand and seventeen, came up with a chart that raised all of the rates by two percent a year until two thousand and thirty?
Right.
Yep.
What about the years where there weren't any raises given?
They did it, they, they calculated it anyway.
It was assumed that they were given.
So, some town employees did not get raises.
Right.
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 We are, I'm kind of surprised about that. Why'd they do it that way?
Yeah, I mean.
We, we still have to have a conversation about it. We, you know, this is the, the data collection part of it. We have not had, Ken, correct me if I'm wrong, an in-depth conversation about those calculations. Am I right?
Right, right.
Yeah, I mean, it would, it would seem like over the last three years, from seventeen to twenty, if we've definitely only had one, one year where we were able, or maybe two, to, to be able to provide for a two percent increase. I mean, at, at most, I would think you'd have to make the chart comparable to what we actually did do as a, for the, all the town employees, no? So if there was a year where we said we can't manage an increase, we can't manage a COLA this year,
Right.
I think, that, that should go by the wayside, I think. I mean, I, that would be my way of looking at it.
You start and they're going to get upwards of four percent higher than someone that's already working in the department.
Or maybe six.
I can see.
I think that, what they're, what they're assuming is that the norm in each of those years is a two percent
Right. Yeah.
COLA increase.
But it didn't happen.
No, it didn't happen, but they're saying that it probably should have. We just made the determination that we weren't going to make a two percent increase while, you know, industry was.
Yeah, that's going to cause.
You know what I'm saying?
They have employees that were hired two years ago who are going to be making less than people that just start, potentially.
I'm sorry? Say that again?
If you have somebody who's already been hired and in three years they got a raise once, and then you just gave a new employee, uh, two percent, two percent, two percent, they could theoretically start at a higher rate than someone who's already in the department. I think it doesn't reward security at all. I think, based on, there's no point in going to two thousand and thirty, for one thing. I think that they should do it based on what really did happen, and then readjust the scales based on, you know, a fair wage or something. I just.
I, I, I would disagree with you. If we got the information from the treasurer's office about which years we gave increases, and then that becomes the schedule that we follow for that year, and then we build on that going forward.
That's what I.
That way, that way it reflects what really did happen.
Right.
And where we're heading. Because i- i- in this regard, there's going to be a lot of, a lot of makeup that we're not going to be able to afford.
Right.
And I don't think. I haven't seen, I haven't seen the collective numbers yet.
Yeah, so when she was, when they were looking for information from department heads, were they looking information as far as who may have been hired or who didn't get, are they thinking about going back and trying to correct the past years of no raises? Are they trying to find out who was hired since two thousand and seventeen to rectify an existing scale? What, uh, what information is being collected?
I think it's just trying to plot people on this schedule. That, that's what I think is, I don't know. We've not had, as I'm saying to you.
Already.
I've not had a, a, a detailed, in-depth conversation about other, and so my assumption is they just applied, and I may be wrong, Ken, you can correct me.
Well, we real.
Is that they just applied two percent year after year after year in doing their calculation.
Yeah, and it really hasn't, uh, it really hasn't any weight, any weight in any discussions that we've had at this point.
No.
Like I said, I think I, I certainly support COLA raises. I think we have to come up with a scale that, you know, we're moving in a direction for good compensation, fair compensation. But I fear that we won't have the data that we need to, um, if my, my hope is that we would move people closer to where they are in the chart. If we don't have a chart that is solid, sound, that we can, you know, rest on, I'm worried that we're not going to have the data that we need to see who's the far, farthest off, uh, the percentage, uh, on the chart.
Can, can we not get that though, through the payroll, through the treasurer's office? More easily in one, one consolidated space? I mean,
Yeah.
Hour, hourly rates are
Right.
Are there, right? When they turn in time sheets for those that are on that schedule, right? I mean.
They've already requested that, I believe.
Oh, okay.
I would have a minimum that went out.
I'll just pass along to add that this is information that these are our priorities. We're all more or less in line with, you know, these priorities. There's additional things like Chris's, uh, so what I heard was minimum wage, department heads higher off the PQB chart, COLA raises for employees, uh, supporting communication upgrades, uh, such as the voiceover, um, network, um, schoolchildren, um, override budget, um, as a collective, uh, for the entire town. So as departments are pitted against each other. And then, um, yeah, I think that's what we said. Anybody want to support anything else that I pass along to Ed? Okay, this will be fun.
I'd love to put the conservation agent back in, but I don't know how we support it going forward.
I know. And that was one that we took out last time before the override budget, and I feel badly about that.
Yep.
Mm-hmm. But it was like, oh my God, it just felt like we're just like slashing and burning and slashing and burning. And then it was just hard to, that's because, you know, the exercise is going to merely, like, merely make you prioritize. Okay, we've met, any other, um, necessary business that can't wait until the next, uh, April twentieth select board meeting?
Not something that can't wait, but I just want to mention, remember the, uh, the, um, call that came out from East Hampton Media to nominate folks for their board?
Yeah.
Um, it's my understanding that we have three people that have stepped up to be nominated. I just don't know what paperwork we're going to see to make that happen. So I'd like to be sure that that doesn't get lost. Uh, all three happen to be part of the ad hoc tech committee.
Oh, good. Fantastic.
So, just so we can put it on the agenda next time around, maybe?
Yeah, I will only do that. And I will ask Ed for some paperwork on that. Um, if anybody ever has any agenda items that you'd like to add, please feel free to reach out. Uh, Ed usually sends it to me by Wednesday or Thursday, and then we go back and forth, and it gets posted the very latest, uh, on Friday morning. So just keep that in mind. Uh, we have, uh, no licenses, we have no PCFs, we have warrants.
Yeah, I think we've got just two warrants, actually. Um.
I'm going to sign out, folks.
All right, thanks a lot, Ken.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night now.
Yeah, so we have two warrants, uh, W twenty-one thirty-nine, which is a vendor payable warrant in the amount of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars and twenty-six cents. And then a warrant PD twenty-one, oops, twenty-one thirty-eight A in the amount of a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars and three cents. And that's actually a payroll deduction warrant and the monthly retirement, um, and health insurance, uh, included in that. So those are the two that we have this time around.
Okay, thank you. Any questions about the warrants? Okay, next is, uh, documents. There are none. Minutes to approve. There are two, December one and December eighth, two thousand and twenty. They were in our packet. They're such detailed minutes, it's just remarkable. Uh.
Yeah.
Judy, I think, did these ones, maybe Judy and Kathy, but either one of them usually do them. They watch the video and they do a great job. So, does anybody have any suggestions on those minutes?
They, they looked okay to me. I didn't notice anything in particular.
I didn't see anything, um, that I questioned either. Would someone like to make a motion then?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of December one and December eight, as written.
Is there a second?
Uh, second.
I think Matt got it in there.
Okay, so Matt.
Second by Matt. Um, any questions? All in favor?
Just fine.
Ball's eye.
Rollin' eye.
And Groden eye. Um, I don't know if people have any questions. These things kind of remain on here. Greenway, of course, is new information. Uh, the rest of it, um, I don't think anything's been happening. Um, so, next then is, um, calendar announcements. We just mentioned putting in a meeting in there for April twenty-seventh.
Right.
And a joint meeting with the finance committee. And then after that would typically be the following May date, and we might have to be approving the warrant on the twenty-seventh. Cause I think the warrant is due for May fourth, right? Not that we couldn't have another meeting before then, but as of right now, if we meet on the twentieth and the twenty-seventh, then the fourth, actually, that is the, it's.
Regular meeting, yeah.
He's asking for the, um, warrant articles to be in by May fourth at noon. So we may, you know, we'll have to see how it goes on the next two meetings.
Okay, so we may or may not do the fourth?
Well, I think we would do it anyway. I, I mean, I think it's our regular schedule, but we can always decide, we can always decide that.
Yeah, the fourth and the eighteenth would be those tentative dates, okay.
Yeah, the fourth and the eighteenth would be the tentative dates.
Okay.
But let's just agree right now for the twentieth and the twenty-seventh with the finance committee. Get it up next time.
Okay.
Okay, open time for the public. Select Board reserves a portion of its meeting from public comment encourages participation. Um, anybody from the public like to speak? No? Okay, Tammy. Uh, so don't forget, celebrate Southampton, um, August thirteen, fourteen? Thirteen, fourteen. Great, okay. Um, correspondence, I got two, uh, we got two correspondences and I, uh, I mentioned the previous one that came in. It was from Dave McDougall, and it was relative to the, um, internet service. Dear Select Board, internet service on Russellville Road has been intermittent for several weeks. Other citizens have noticed intimate, intimate in service as well. College Highway is the, College Highway, is the cable commission still active? If so, could they look into this issue? As a physician, I require connectivity to care for my patients. Thank you, Dave McDougall, uh, D.O. So I did write back to him, and I am going to ask Ed or myself, uh, I will reach out to the cable company because I think there's a fair amount of dissatisfaction with the, um, cable service, and I think it would be, uh, good for us to hear from them directly. I got another email from Jim Cenney. Let me just bring it up. Actually, it's in my other email account, hang on. And this is, he is the chair of the Housing Authority in Town and Housing Trust Creation. Diarini, I hope I'm spelling your name right. I mean, but I'm emailing as chair of the Southampton Housing Authority an alert regarding our upcoming efforts. The Housing Authority's priority for the coming months is the creation of a housing production plan, a key component of which is cre- a creation of a Southampton Housing Trust. A housing trust surprisingly requires membership exclusive of Housing Authority members, a logical separation of duties upon further consideration. Housing Trust members often include select board and town administrator participation. Thankfully, thankfully, available CPC funds for housing can be utilized to con- contract administrative support, recognizing small-town select boards and admins are stretched and so need the administrative support. Um, speaking from a place of very limited experience and knowledge, thankfully, the Mass Housing Partnership is available to provide educational presentation to the select board on the housing trust creation and maintenance. If you agree, a brief MHP presentation at a future select board meeting makes sense, please let me know. So I did write back and said, I think that would be a great idea. I think that we have money in CPC for housing that hasn't really been able to be, um, you know, expended for the benefit of, uh, affordable housing. And I suggested that that would be a great thing for the future, but possibly once we're done with the budget.
Mm-hmm, that'd be great. Yeah. Yeah, I think Housing and, and Planning Board are going to be working together on the next DLT A grant, um, to try and update the housing plan that has been, I think it was created in two thousand and ten, so it sorely needs it. Yep. And just, just one thing to add while we're on housing, um, through the CARES Act, they're also doing, um, a new program with, uh, help from Community Action. They're providing some rental assistance to people in town that have had difficulties, uh, meeting their rent obligations, and that's, that's under the CARES Act. There was an announcement about that. I think it's posted on the bulletin board at Town Hall, but I think it was on Facebook or somewhere as well. So that's just something, just, just starting up, so.
Is that something that the, um, the almanors are aware of?
I would think so. Uh, it's separate from that, but I would.
I know, but I mean, they might know.
Yeah. And, and it wasn't much. I mean, through the CARES Act, we had to prove six thousand dollars. So it won't get them very far, but it's at least starting. And, and they've worked it out to be, uh, administered, um, in conjunction, I believe, with the Community Action Network people, so.
Okay.
Excellent. That's really good use of that funds, along with the food that's been provided. So it's good to have direct assistance to citizens, not just, um, departments.
Right.
Okay, so at this point, then we're up to, um, executive session. So we, um, are going to go into executive session. We will not be returning to open session, uh, for four items. The first is Master Lodge at the thirty A, section twenty-one, A, number three, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and litigation of an open meeting, may be detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the community. Local one thirty, New England Police Benevolent Association Police Officers. Master Lodge at the thirty A, section twenty-one, number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Fire Chief. Master Lodge at the thirty A, section twenty-one, number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation for non-union personnel or to connect collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Town Accountant. And lastly, Master Lodge at the thirty A, section twenty-one, A, number seven, to comply with or act under the authority of, uh, any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements. Approval of executive session minutes, January twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-one, February nine, two thousand and twenty-one, and February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one. So I'll have a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Say again.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Ball's eye.
And Groden eye. It's eight fifty-five. Uh, what time would you like to go into executive session? Five minutes, ten minutes?
Ten.
Then, nine oh five.
Nine oh five, great. All right, good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thanks.
Bye-bye.